Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@gmail.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.
Okay, good evening. It is 6:30, and I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Town of Falmouth Select Board, Monday, October 27, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me just remember to do this the first time. Just a reminder to please silence your cell phone and notify the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Our first order of business is a proclamation. I'm going to ask Mr. Renshaw to give a little bit of a background.
I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Select Board and members of the audience, the Extra Mile Foundation is a national organization. It's entering its 17th year of operation. They exist to offer an opportunity, and a vehicle really, to recognize people and organizations and communities across the country for their volunteerism and contributing and engagement with the community. I can tell you that Massachusetts currently has 22 municipalities, cities and towns, members of the Extra Mile Foundation, or Extra Mile Cities, none of which of those are on the Cape, so we would be the first Cape municipality if the Board decides to issue the proclamation. We become, in effect, an Extra Mile City. And the Director of Marketing and Public Outreach reached out to the Select Board Office earlier this month and requested this be considered tonight.
Okay, very good. I'm going to turn to Mr. Reed.
Yes.
To...
Shall read the proclamation.
Mr. Reed shall read.
All right. Proclamation, Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2025. Whereas Falmouth, Massachusetts is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively, quote, "go the extra mile," end quote, in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Falmouth, Massachusetts is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Falmouth, Massachusetts is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who, quote, "go the extra mile," end quote, in order to make a difference and to lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Falmouth, Massachusetts acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 Extra Mile Cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2025. Now therefore, we, Robert B. Mascali, Heather M. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2025, to be the Extra Mile Day. We urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness thereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the great scale of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed to this day, Monday, October 27, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We'll ask Mr. Renshaw to forward that to the appropriate person.
Yes, sir.
At the Foundation. Thank you. Okay, our next matter is recognition. Does anyone on the Board have any recognition that they would like to acknowledge? Ms. Goldstone?
Well, following on that proclamation, I think it's only appropriate to acknowledge the hundreds of volunteers that support our town, week in and week out, all year round. And I think we've also got a fabulous example out on Main Street right now of our local nonprofits and businesses going the extra mile with the scarecrows all up and down. So if folks want to vote for their favorite, there is a benefit to those who win, and that's an example of the Falmouth Business Association going the extra mile to support our community. So I think a great example of that vibrancy that the proclamation recognizes.
Mr. Richardson?
And unfortunately, still, to recognize the thousands of furloughed workers across the Commonwealth and in Falmouth, and we stand in solidarity with you, and hopefully the government will reopen again soon.
Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize the passing of Cynthia Sullivan, the boat accident victim there, the Sullivan family. Husband, I guess, is recovering pretty well in the hospital at Brigham and Wyman's Burn Center, but unfortunately, Mrs. Sullivan didn't survive, and their dog didn't survive either, so thoughts and concerns and condolences to their family.
Yeah, true tragedy, absolutely. Any announcements? The one that I'll mention is tomorrow evening, there will be a community meeting at the Lawrence School, starting at 6 o'clock, to discuss the sighting of the police station. Any others? Ms. Goldstone?
Yes, I was asked by the folks at the Falmouth Pond Coalition to share information about a webinar that they will be hosting on November 20, an educational webinar at 4:00 PM, to learn about watershed planning and water quality protection methods and what the benefits are. And sorry, I'm reading here from a very small version of a flyer on the phone. To register and receive, this is free and open to the public, but they are asking for registrations for security purposes. To register and receive the Zoom link, please email falmouthpondcoalition@gmail.com.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to public comment. Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. Anyone here would like to speak to public comment? If not, we will proceed to the consent agenda. I will read the items, starting with licenses. Consider a vote to approve a change of address as required by the Town Engineer to comply with the town's address policy for Kenyon's Market and Liquors LLC, DBA Kenyon's Market, to be updated to 769 East Falmouth Highway, Suite 1A. Number two, consider a vote to approve a change of address as required by the Town Engineer's Office to comply with the town's address policy for Pepperoni, Inc., DBA Pizza 1 and Subs 2, to be updated to 769 East Falmouth Highway, Suite 1D. Administrative office orders, I'm sorry. Consider a vote to approve and sign a discharge of mortgage by and between the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund and Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc. Number two, consider a vote to approve a request from the Commission on Substance Use to expand its committee membership from seven to nine members. And number three, consider a vote to accept a donation from the Falmouth Running Club in the amount of $500 to the BikeWay's donation account for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee Cape Cod Marathon volunteers. Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just thanks for the donations.
Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we will proceed to committee interviews. The first is to interview and consider a vote to appoint committee members, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Frieder Klein. Mr. Renshaw?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair, and it's in your packets. This is to fill a single vacancy with an unexpired term of June 30, 2026.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Hello?
Please introduce yourself and tell us why you want to be on the Bike Way, Bike and Pedestrian Committee.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Frieder Klein. I live on Ambleside Drive, Precinct 6. I've been a Falmouth resident since 2009, and I work at Hui. I commute to work every day, year-round, by bicycle, and as such, I have grown a keen interest in the bicycle infrastructure and safety around town, trying to encourage others. I've participated in Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee meetings and believe that they have done an outstanding job advocating for cyclists and pedestrians in town. And I think as a commuter, but also as a recreational bicyclist and walker in town, I can contribute to their mission and would be happy to become a member of the committee.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Yes?
I would just be curious, especially as a commuter, what would be one of your top priorities in terms of improvements that we could be making as a town?
Yeah, I think that the bicycle network in town is good, but can be improved, especially in terms of safety and connectivity. So when I, I have an eight-year-old son who rides his bicycle, and I'm comfortable doing that or letting him ride his bicycle alone in the neighborhood. But when it comes to, you know, public roads, then, you know, it gives me a pause. And so I think many other people in town feel the same way, so I would advocate for bicycle safety through improved markings, lane, bike lane, dedicated bike lanes on roads that are, you know, already marked as bike routes, but there's no bike lane whatsoever. Ideally, there would be a physical barrier for cyclists in town that improves safety evidently and makes people more comfortable. And I think also there's an issue that we're all aware of, that is the traffic in town, car traffic, especially during the summer months. So the more people we can get on a bicycle or on foot to do, to run the errands or commute to work, the better it is for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make the motion to accept Frieder Klein for the appointment set forth by Town Management. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's for a term ending June 30, 2026. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next opening is on the Conservation Commission, and we have James P. McGrath. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know, the Conservation Commission consists of seven members and three alternate members. There are currently four vacancies on the CONCOM, two full-member positions with terms ending June 30 of 2028, and two alternate-member positions with terms ending June 30, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGrath, please introduce yourself. Tell us why you want to be on CONCOM.
My name is James McGrath. I've been a resident in Falmouth for over 20 years and really believe that, I'm recently retired, and believe I want to give back to my community. I looked at various committees that I would like to serve on, and the Conservation Committee really struck out to me as something that's really important to this town. The resources are really what makes Falmouth the community that it is, and I believe that through proper education and advice, that the resources could be expanded further in conservation and commitment would be important.
I see you're also interested possibly in the Energy Commission and the Ponds Advisory Committee, so thank you for your interest.
Yeah.
Any questions? Yes?
Is the Conservation Commission a body that you interacted with during your career through your business?
It's a good question. I owned an exhibit company that designed and manufactured exhibits for companies that went to trade shows, and I established a green committee to try to reduce waste and our carbon footprint. And we were able to do so. We switched from using wood and laminates, which are bad for the environment, to fabrics and soluble inks, which have a less impact on the, harmful to the environment.
One other question, have you attended a Conservation Commission meeting?
I have not. Recently retired, and it's just something that I was interested in getting involved in.
All right. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I would move approval and appointment of the gentleman, what would be the term?
There are two alternate-position openings and two full-member position openings?
One position is ending in June of next year, and the other one goes to June of 2028. Would you like the longer term?
Please.
I will nominate Mr. McGrath for the term ending 6:30, 2028.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Thank you. Our next interview is for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee, Ms. Suzanne Thomas. Is Ms. Thomas here? Yes, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Thomas. I've been a Falmouth resident since 1997.
And why would you like to be on this committee?
I've been working as a laboratory technician at the Marine Biological Lab since 97, and in the past five years or so, I've been involved with diversity, equity, inclusion work, both at the Marine Biological Lab and in the wider scientific areas. And I hope to expand that to the Town Committee, because as we know, if we want to increase diversity in our workforce, if people don't feel welcome in their towns, in their schools, then people don't stay. So it's a question of problem solving. We solve problems better when we're a diverse group.
Echoing questions that come from our members, have you attended any of the meetings to date?
I've attended a couple of meetings, yes.
And any ideas about making it better or seeing its reach expand?
I've attended two meetings so far, and I think my first point will be to listen.
Okay, very good. Okay, any further questions?
I see you have great references.
I was going to say.
I will make the motion to appoint Suzanne Thomas to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging DEIB Advisory Committee.
Second.
To a term ending June 30, 2028.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. And our final interview is for the Historical Commission, Mr. Jeremy Kraus. Mr. Kraus?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Kraus. I've lived in Falmouth for about 20 years. I'm an architect, and I head up the Structural Engineering Department at Falmouth Lumber, and I love this town, and I'm passionate about architecture.
Okay. Mr. Brown, you usually have questions on the Historical Commission.
I always ask the same question lately, is are you more of a traditionalist or modernist? I'm concerned about our Main Street maintaining its traditional architecture, and I've been asking everyone lately that's getting appointed if they will be interested in that.
I'm interested in, you know, moving forward in the spirit of what we've done. So I'm not married to the past, but I like what's here, and I would like to keep it that way.
That's a good answer.
Okay.
Although the last person that we interviewed was, worked on the project out on Quis' Nav that was like my reason for asking the question, but we still appointed him.
Okay, Ms. Goldstone? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can go first.
I was just curious if you could point out any examples of your work in town?
I've done houses in town. I don't know if they'd ring bells, right? Down on the harbor, I did one on Mare Vista, and then a lot of stuff sort of nestled into the neighborhoods. I don't know if any would stand out to you.
Mr. Richardson?
The only thing I'll add is, how do you see, and this is a complicated question, you might know the answer to, but how do we meet the, kind of off Mr. Brown's point, our goals around building more housing in density while keeping characteristics in place of the town?
That's a very complicated question. I would think that's tough, because they, a lot of those projects are very budget-oriented, and those, it doesn't seem like they care that much about the aesthetics. So, you know, working with them to sort of honor what we want while still moving forward, I think, will be the challenge.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Well, I guess one more question. There are two alternate positions available, right, with two different terms ending in '27 or '28. Since you're dipping your toe in for the first time, do you have a preference on the length of that term?
I do not.
Okay, well, someone make a motion, and he'll take whatever we give him, so go for '28.
Yeah, go for '28 then. Motion to appoint Jeremy Kraus to an alternate-member position on the Historical Commission for a term ending June 30, 2028.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, I'll make my usual pitch, that residents should consult the town website. There are a number of vacancies that are available that might very well suit an individual's talents. As Vice Chair Goldstone mentioned before, when we started, we have plenty of volunteers working, but we can certainly use more. So please take a look at the website and see if there's something there that meets your talents and your interests, so thank you. We will now move to consider a vote to appoint committee members now as, well, Mr. Renshaw, do you want to give a little intro on this?
So I will, Mr. Chairman. I'm going through my notes. So as you all recall, the last meeting, we had, we conducted interviews. We had three, what I consider in my humble opinion, outstanding candidates. There was discussion, obviously, about increasing the number of members, which the Board did earlier on consent. It would be my recommendation, and we can have some more discussion about the term dates and whatnot, but it would be my recommendation that the Board consider appointing each of those three outstanding, again, in my humble opinion, candidates to serve in those respective committee positions.
And those would be Dr. Greg Parkinson, Mr. Ryan Walker, and Mr. Brian LeBlanc. And one of the, one of the questions that had been raised the last time we were discussing it was that there was really not a person on the Commission who was actively engaged in recovery. Mr. LeBlanc was very candid and honest about his recovery, and the Board was very happy to hear of his interest in the Commission. So we have, we haven't asked them to come back. They were all interviewed to our satisfaction at the last meeting, so this is just a vote to approve them. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification, we do have Rick Corey that's on the committee, who's an experienced member of that community, so just to clarify.
Okay.
Point of clarification, are we arbitrarily picking the dates similar to the last person? Do you have a recommendation for who gets what? Because right now, we have June 30, 2026, June 30, 2027, and June 30, 2028.
Rabbi Lieberman, would you have any, help us out from the Commission?
I'm going to recommend Mr. LeBlanc for the term ending in '26, Mr. Walker for the one in '27, and Mr. Parkinson for the one in '28.
I might differ with you in one regard, in that we've got two terms ending in 2027, and
Oh, excuse me.
eager applicants, perhaps Dr. Parkinson for the term ending in '28, and Mr. Walker and Mr. LeBlanc for terms ending in '27.
That sounds good.
Second. The motion, is that, was that a motion, Mr.?
As amended?
Yes. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, thank you to all three of those gentlemen for stepping up. Okay, we will now move to public hearing, and I'll ask Vice Chair Goldstone to read the notice.
Just let me flip through.
Good crowd here tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Where did it go? Do you have the notice? I'm not finding it in the packet here. It's usually just after the, oh, challenging my eyesight. Excellent. Town of Falmouth Select Board Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws, as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926, and amendments thereto, that Aquatic Brewing LLC, DBA Aquatic Brewing, located at 661 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass., has applied for an annual entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, October 27, 2025, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Thank you. Mr. Renshaw, while Mr., is it Bergen?
Bergen.
Is getting to the podium, please?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. All of this is in your packets, but as he's approaching the podium, I'll just say that the applicant, per the application, a live band is going to, is planned, is proposed to play both amplified and acoustic music inside the building, and the applicant describes the position within the building is along the front left side within the taproom area. The application has been reviewed by the Police Department, Health Department, and Fire Rescue Departments with no objections or issues expressed. There is a note, however, that the Health Department has reminded the applicant that the food trucks, which they commonly have, are required to be licensed by the Health Department.
Is that okay?
Yes, it is. So I'm Alex Bergen. I've been in Falmouth for 14 years. I am one of the owners and the brewer over at Aquatic Brewing, and I believe that being able to provide live music will help as making our brewery a hub for ideas and community building within Falmouth.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant? We haven't received any comments, Mr. Renshaw, from anyone?
No, Mr. Chair. No, Mr. Chair, no comments.
Okay, so is anyone prepared to make?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the application by Aquatic Brewing LLC, DBA Aquatic Brewing, located at 661 Main Street, Falmouth, for an entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license to be executed Wednesday through Sunday from 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is a public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to close the hearing. Excuse me.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Not ahead of myself, thank you.
Any discussion with respect to the application?
Did we solicit?
Anyone in the public would care to speak? Nope.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you for reminding me. All right. So any discussion?
None. I've been to the brewery, and it's a nice place, and I don't think music would hurt anything.
Mr. Reed?
I would second what Mr. Brown says. This is a gem in the community, and it's a small business that started and has been successful, and we need to do all we can to continue to help small businesses like Aquatic succeed here in town, and this is an easy way to do it.
All right, well, it sounds like we have a motion. Is there a second?
Do I have to, so, plan a clarification? Do I have to vote? Do we already close the hearing?
We did.
Very good. Okay. Then no.
Well, actually, we didn't actually say all in favor.
Yeah, that's all.
I thought we
We had a motion and a second. We didn't all say aye.
And then we stopped, and I said, oh, did we actually ask the public? Sidetracked you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that.
Hopefully, that was the hardest part of the process.
This is the first time since I This is the first time since I became the chair that we're actually a minute ahead of ourselves on the, on the agenda, and I was just trying to force it through, I guess. I apologize. Anyway, it is 7 o'clock, and we would like to hear a report from the School Committee, please. Thank you. Actually, 6:59, so.
You have to wait a minute.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank you, thank you for inviting us to give this report. I'm Terry Medeers, the chairman of the School Committee, and this is Lori Dur the Superintendent.
Can you just put it in the presentation?
Thank you.
Ms. Medeers, you may want to move the mic a little closer to you.
To me?
I think so.
All right, thank you so much for having us tonight. Good to be here. I'm going to first talk about, as soon as I move, go. I'm going to first talk about school safety, and this gives us an opportunity to really thank the town, all the partnerships we have and the support of not only the, the town, but our, our community members and the town meeting members that continue to support the items that helps us to be safer and more secure. So, speaking about that, the infrastructure, over the last several years, we have been working to have secured doors. It's upgrading, making sure that they shut and lock on their own. It helps with the, you know, our protocols that all doors need to be shut and locked at all times. So, the door upgrades, and then the, the system upgrades, being that staff have immediate access to, to doors at, pretty much around the, the perimeters. So that if we're outside, we need to get in, then that, you know, can happen very smoothly. The other upgrades that we've been making are cameras, and so the town meeting, the funds have been made available, again, for cameras. We are just about near having a complete perimeter of our buildings, and so a few more cameras will get us there. And then we're also looking at a camera upgrade that will, we're going cloud-based. So, it actually will allow all of our cameras to work more effectively and be able to see, see further. So, having those cameras upgraded over time has been really important as far as our overall safety. Fencing, we have been, our staff have, have been assessing different areas around the perimeter of our buildings where a certain amount of fencing may help deter people to be on, on our properties. And so, we're continuing to look at that, and that will be a future or ongoing expense as well. Personnel, resources, we're very fortunate that we have a safety and security coordinator. We have one safety monitor in every one of our buildings. We also have a substitute safety monitor, in case anyone needs to be out, that we actually have someone that's in our buildings. We have two SROs. This has been something that we've had, always had one. We just upgraded this year to two full-time. It's something that has been on the plans, and the, we've now been able to move to two. Since pretty early in the school year, we've had detail officers assigned to each of our four elementary schools and Morse Pond School, and they are still there. And so, that is something, again, the partnership that we appreciate. With our collaboration, I just can't say enough about the, the work that we do in close communication, collaboration, training, et cetera, with the Falmouth Police Department and the Falmouth Fire Department. Several years ago, we started the training with Alice, and the Falmouth Police Department has led the way for us, and very, you know, very appreciative. They're still heavily involved in all of our trainings with our staff. So, the trainings with the staff, we do some trainings with our Lawrence and Falmouth High School students, and then we do drills in all of our buildings with and without students involved. And reunification, which is, we've really been ramping up. Last year, we have a partnership with the, the church on 151. It's a big venue, and we are now starting to practice our reunification. So, if something were to happen, what are all the protocols so that we can reunite safely our students and their families? We will be having some additional, we started one last year, we'll have two more this year. We'll continue to work through the buildings, make that an annual practice as well. We have other protocols. I mentioned the doors, that all the doors need to be locked. We have protocols for allowing visitors into the building, and protocols if there are individuals on our school property. When I say that, I mean our community members. We have a lot of people that enter our property. I don't know that they, the people know that from 7 to 5:30. It's off limits to the property, because we welcome community members on our properties in the evenings and the weekends. And so, we have a lot of playgrounds. They're used a lot. We are part of the, the community. But, but we do ask people, you know, if they want to cut through our property, but just not during the school day. So, we have protocols for, for that as well. And just, you know, I put response here, and really what I mean is, you know, if, if students are anxious for whatever reason, we have a lot of support for, for students and staff. But we have 19 school adjustment counselors across seven buildings and seven guidance counselors. So, we are well-staffed in our buildings to respond to student needs. We also have a really strong collaboration with Falmouth Human Services. One person is pretty dedicated to our schools and our families, full-time plus some additional supports. McLean Hospital, Riverside Trauma Center are both provide training for our staff, as well as have, help us in response to certain student needs. And then we also have the companion animal program, as well as other comfort dogs, like the Sheriff's Department that has their comfort dog that has come into the buildings with the dogs. It's, they're, they really are a lot of comfort to our students, and we've had great partnerships. So, so we enjoy that. And so, just another thank you for all the support and to make sure that our buildings are, are really coming up to, to the standard that we need them to be.
Okay. So, I'm going to talk about student enrollment, and Lori's going to click the button. This includes pre-K rate, okay. So, you can see, Falmouth High School may be a shocker to some of you, that it's below 700. And I don't need to read them. You can see them. Just one comment I wanted to make, that East Falmouth Elementary includes the pre-K classes where the other elementary schools don't. Okay, did anybody have any questions?
Do you know how large that number is, pre-K?
Yeah, we were 135. This is official October 1 data. We are up to 138 right now, but it was 135 at the time.
Pretty significant.
174 K to four students.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you know, I'm probably, off the cuff question, do you know what the capacity of students is considered to be at Lawrence? Has that, has that been evaluated ever?
At the, what capacity we could have?
Oh, yeah, what would be the total?
Why not?
Okay.
Thank you for the info on that one. We'll share that shortly.
Okay.
I have one more question. So, if you were to add Morse Pond and Lawrence, four grades together, it's about 900. We're a little less than 700 at the high school, and that's lower than it's been even in very recent past years. Do we know what that drop-off is? Because if all of those fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders were to move up to the high school, yeah, it would be a much larger number than it is there. Is it, is it students choosing other, like, is this just a, we have a smaller class? Is that students choosing other schools?
We usually have from eighth grade to ninth grade. I hope I'm answering your question on this one. Between eighth and ninth, we usually have about 40 to 60 students that go elsewhere. That's kind of the trend. So that, so that grade.
So, that's about, that's about 200 students total over four, four, yeah, four years. That, okay.
We were at a little over 720 last year at the high school.
There's a bubble year in amongst these numbers, too. I can't remember.
The current eighth, the current eighth grade is a bubble year, and our fourth grade, current fourth grade is the big bubble.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, here's a five-year enrollment comparison. You can see the numbers in '21, '22, and the present. It represents approximately 2% each year, the drop. Okay, any other questions? Or any questions? Okay, so now, we always take a look at the various student populations. So, our multilingual learners, you can see that's taken a substantial jump in the last five years. Okay. Our students with disabilities is growing, but not remarkably, I don't think you would say. We also have economically disadvantaged, which actually surprised me that it went down from five years ago.
Is that based on the free lunch program? Is that how you get to that number?
There's, it's a calculation that there's, you know, even like the SNAP program. So, when, when parents enroll in certain federal, state programs, then that contributes to the number.
Yeah. The formula changed along the road.
It changed, it has changed on and off.
Yeah, yeah.
Which may be some of that.
Yeah. Okay. And then our race and ethnicity breakdown. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. So, there you have a snapshot of who's going to Falmouth Public Schools these days.
Why didn't you round it up to one? It's just 0.99 is kind of funny.
Maybe because, who knows? Maybe our, maybe the program we use to compute is.
Yeah, no worries.
I don't know if that was a fair question either. I don't know if that was a fair question either, but anyway, just kidding.
So close. All right. So, you know, navigating the future, we introduced to the community in September a year ago, and just kind of get a little bit on where we are today. Just, so, again, the challenges that we're trying to address are the declining enrollment. You know, Terry mentioned the last five years, but we have 25 years of approximately 2% drop every year for 25 years. So, it continues, I think, is the point that we have in that slide. The need to consolidate on two levels, right? The, the drop in enrollment, and it's not sound anymore to be able to operate seven buildings when we know that comfortably we can have all students in six buildings. And so, that's, you know, part of starting this, the transitions. At the middle grades, we know that the longer students stay in a building, the more they become connected, and then that, you know, relates to, you know, how committed they are, and then the commitment obviously translates to student achievement. So, and then, again, the fiscal responsibility really is, we are, you know, stewards of the, the budget for the school department, and we really have to think, you know, about where we're spending those dollars. And I'll have a little more about that in a few minutes. So, the Lawrence School renovation, the timeline, we submitted the statement of interest on April 11. The school committee and Select Board signed off on the statement of interest. The school, they had a school visit on September 9. They toured, they had questions for us, and then they toured the building, and then also toured, toured Morse Pond Building. When we submitted, we submitted with a three-grade configuration for Lawrence, and that we were also taking a school offline, and had school being Morse Pond. So, that was part of that package. They're probably not going to be interested in renovating if it were just for two grades, or we weren't looking at our declining enrollment, that we were not addressing the declining enrollment along with the package. If we're accepted into the program, then we'll be coming back for some initial funding for the architect and engineering at the April town meeting. And again, we will know whether we're accepted in on December 12. So, that would be our next step. So, our, the recommendation of both the Building Needs Task Force and the administration is that we return, reopen the Lawrence School with three grades. We're recommending grade five, six, seven. Move grade eight to the Falmouth High School the year construction begins, and then Morse Pond, or move grades five, six, and seven into the new Lawrence School the, the year construction is finalized. We, that is still up for discussion, and we'll be continuing to discuss with the school committee tomorrow night, whether it's going to be grades five, six, seven, or grades six, seven, eight. So, they're still in that discussion. What we're committed to is that it is three grades.
That's what Mashpee currently does?
I'm sorry.
Is that what Mashpee currently does?
So, Mashpee has grades seven through 12 in the high school, seven, eight being in a portion of the high school.
Thank you.
Well, that's actually a good question, so I can, if I can expand on it for a second. Everyone on the Cape is either eight to 12 or seven to 12, except for Bourne and Falmouth, and, and it's, for the school committee at the Bourne to vote to put eight into, so they'll be voting in November to, for eight to go into the high school. Okay, and so, Doug, this is what I, the slide I was going to show you. In approximately 10 years ago, in the 2015, 2016 school year, for grades seven and eight, there were 578 students at the time. Presently, 444. When we did the presentation, this was the '24, '25 school year, so it was 474. This year, it's 444, as seen on that, that slide. So, you can see that decline. If we were to put five, six, seven into Lawrence, then it would be 595 students. These are all projections that was done for, from an independent study with NSDAQ that did historical enrollments and projected future enrollments. At the high school, 10 years ago, there were 862 enrolled in the high school. As of last year, there were 714, and then you saw the drop to just under 700 this year. And then the projected, if we had grades eight to 12, would be 833. So, Morse Pond, the Building Needs Task Force and the Falmouth Public School Administration is recommending that we return the Morse Pond School and property to, back to the town, once the Lawrence renovation has been completed. And this is important, because we need that building. We can't renovate Lawrence School while we have students in the school. It is a major renovation. So, grade six and seven can attend Morse Pond while the renovation, so it is post-renovation on that. And the school committee is scheduled to vote tomorrow night on that piece. And just a little bit to explain further on that, right now, our current cost of expenses, and this is just maintenance on the building, so custodial maintenance, utility expenses is $638,000. Future capital expenses, I think we've talked to you before, the building is definitely in need of a new roof, which is coming in around 9.6. All buildings, at some point in the near future, are going to need to be air-conditioned. If you put solar pan, have the roof done so that it will take solar panels, and also dealing with the air conditioning, you're talking nearly $20 million of renovation on that for, for school. And so, that expense does not make sense when we have a declining enrollment, and we are asking to renovate Lawrence School. And then our elementary
We want to, we want to keep pushing how much money we're saving, so that we don't feel guilty when we ask for this $120 million or so from the town. So, say that again, Lori. Say again how much we're saving.
Well, that would be, and you know how expenses of maintenance goes up. So, currently, this school year, $638,000, and just think about over 10 years, plus that, that price will keep going up, and then the, the capital expenses. I did forget to do the enrollment here. Right now, grades five and six, I'm sorry, in 15, 16, grades five and six, it was at 613. Last year, it was at 472. If the projected enrollment for 32, 33 is 404. It just does not make sense to continue these buildings.
Does your research show that this is the Does your research show that this is the same throughout the Cape, these drop-off numbers?
It is not only the same in the Cape. We are having significant drops, but it is happening across Massachusetts, as well as nationally. There's not a week that goes past that I don't see some national article about the enrollment and, you know, closing of schools, and having the same conversations about moving eighth grade, you know, into the high school, or even, you know, more grades to that, to that. It's, it's, it's an ongoing issue everywhere.
Yes, Mr.?
Do you think there's some reason that people are more inclined to go to charter schools? Is that having a big impact, or is it just people leaving the Cape? Do you have those, those numbers at all?
So, I don't, it's not that we, it's pretty steady, who, you know, every year, who's leaving. We should have mentioned also, I mean, we have 175 school choice kids coming in. And so, and we just, since that 175 number on October 1, we already have a few more that's come into the schools. So, I don't know that it's, it's the leaving. I think that housing is one of the concerns. You know, young families coming into the, into the, you know, district, or on the Cape anywhere, is some of it. But nationally, what you're reading, it's just that, it's just low birth rates.
Yeah.
Over time, it's just been dropping.
Okay, so expensive.
Yeah.
Just think how much more you'd save if you got rid of that admin building.
Do you want to talk?
We've been banging that around.
Yes, we have.
And, you know, can I...
Yeah, please.
We're not adverse to that at all. It's just, we're not sure what can be done with it. So, we actually would honor suggestions because...
I've been reading that schools lend themselves to housing quite easily, and we could use CPC money from historic and housing to renovate that building and make housing out of it.
I attended the ground, I think I said this last time, but I attended the groundbreaking of the Henry T. Wing School, or the cutting of Sandwich just did exactly that. There's like 50 or 60 units of housing, and they restored the, like, common area auditorium where the community can still use it. And there's a ballpark out back there that the town and the school system still uses. So, it was phenomenal, you should check it out sometime. It was a tremendous use for it. And it's the exact thing the CPC funds that they pull from it, so.
Keep that on the back burner.
We are completely open to that, to that idea. It's a historic building, and I think our, you know, concern is just vacating the building without there being a purpose. So, you know, if, if there's a purpose, then I think that that conversation would be welcome.
We've put a lot of...
No, of course.
We've put a lot of emphasis on the student enrollment, but how's the recruitment and retention of teachers, educators, staff across the border? Are we seeing that stabilized? Do we expect challenges? What's your take on that?
So, I think we're very fortunate that we, we are so close to across, across the bridge. We are very, we're fortunate that we do not have the issue with staffing with teachers, teaching assistants, nurses, where some specialty areas is where we really have this. So, speech and language, pathologist, you know, that's, that's our biggest concern, is trying to find. There are few, and they're needed across the Cape. Everyone seems to be, that's an area. So, there's a, there's a couple of different areas that are challenging to fill. We're actually working with some colleges, trying to bring some programs here to see if we can grow some of those professions on the Cape. But that's, that's probably our biggest area.
Do you have...
The Cape Cod Collaborative is mirroring what Laurie just said, too. And they, they also don't want to take from one school to give to another. So, it's a, you know, try to find a good balance and help everybody, and, but it's a universal Cape problem for the subjects that Laurie was talking about.
And Doug, I just Google that Sturgis' like decline rate is consistent with this?
Oh, really?
Your charter school question?
I think Pope John Paul II has gone down, yeah.
Okay.
And then we had the elementary conversations, which we will, doing presentations and discussions with the, the school committee, that will include recommendations from both the Building Needs Task Force and the administration in those, but not really...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
I have to follow up...
Any questions?
From six years ago, when we started the Homework Committee Task Force, now as a student member. Are, are students still complaining about homework as much as six years ago?
I have to tell you, they're not.
Yeah? It was just, just me?
I think that we've made changes because of that committee.
I'll take credit.
So, yes, thank you for being on that, and I think, I mean, we listened, and we've made changes since. It's why I think we're not hearing it.
Great.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed first, and then Doug.
Yeah, I just had a question. We, we just elected somebody to the DEIB committee. Inclusion and belonging is very, very important. You know, children at an early age learn lessons of right and wrong. What can we do as Falmouth to improve the inclusivity and belonging of students for all children across all ages to really set the foundational goals going forward? And I guess with that in line, what, what do you need the Select Board's eyes on going forward? That's a separate question, but the first one, DEIB.
So, it has been a goal of the district and the school committee for seven, seven years now, I believe, of, and so we, and hired, four years ago, we have a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging director that's helping us. We've had an equity audit. We have outlined our goals based on that audit. So, we are, we're really working on that, and we've worked... So, one of the things I will say, Mr. St. Julian, which is our DEIB director, has worked with the Woods Hole Committee for a long time. He is, he does attend, he's a liaison to the town's advisory. So, we, we've been making these strong connections, and with some different entities within. We have an ambassadors group that, that are really community members, and it is growing. So, we, we're making the connections because we believe that if we have a strong community that is inclusive, then that filters and helps our students as well. So, even though, we can't work in isolation. So, we can do the work inside the schools, but we really need this to be a community-wide. So, thank you for bringing that up. It's really important.
Yep, Mr. Brown?
So, one, before we let you go, later on in our agenda, we're going to discuss the creation of a civic academy, which helps residents understand how their government works, and hopes to maybe get them more engaged. Is there anything like that at the high school? When I was in high school, my last year, I went to Oliver Ames High School. You know, my mom passed, and I went to, up there, and I got myself involved in the Hockamok Senate. And that was like, we sponsor bills, and we, you know, try to learn how government works by participating in a simulated environment. Do you have anything like that going on?
We do. And this is threefold. The Lawrence School, they actually have their government set up as a warrant committee, so they follow the same process as the town. And so, they, you know, have to submit warrants, and then they, you know, they have, you know, discussions, and then they bring it to a vote, vote to the, for the whole school. And we really do support that, so as they want things, whether it's, you know, new trees, you know, around the school.
Or no homework.
Amen.
You know, the new soccer nets, you know, so they figure out what's important to them for the school, and, and they do it, and then we do everything we can to support them, because the students are going through all the work.
They have to stay on budget?
They have to stay on budget, yeah. And then, at the high school, we have the student government, and that's been operating for quite some time. Jack was on the student government, all four years. And...
Only two. I beat incumbent. Beat an incumbent. Actual two years.
It's actually a, a project that the current administration, the Trump administration, is putting out grants with respect to civics education. The numbers, it was like five cents per student on civics, and a multiple of 100 on STEM education. So, one of the things the administration is pushing is civic, civics learning, so. There are grants available, apparently.
So, the three-pronged is that we also have civics courses. It's part of the DUCY, the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, is part of the frameworks. And so, civic education is a part of our curriculum.
And there are grants, I think, that are coming out, or...
There, there is mention of grants.
Yeah, mention of, that's a good point.
And I will say, Representative Mokley and I, we went in about a year ago. Mr. Feeney had us come in and talk to the students, and I ran to Mr. Maury the other day. And I think we're going to keep doing that and try and keep coming in.
It's really special.
I do have one...
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question. First, thank you to schools of, I was the chairman of Falmouth's soccer team in the Cape Cod Summer League, and you guys gave us an incredible discount on the turf fields. But I was wondering, at the original, the policy with public use of the turf was just no? In terms of, like, open, open field hours, whatever, like they have at the rec? Has that changed since? In terms of outside of school hours, can a member of the public use the turf? If they just want to kick the ball?
We've actually been doing that, you know, I mean...
It might have been right after COVID.
You have to sign up, and you have to fill out the application. We have connected with the rec center, and they use it.
Great.
All of our fields, but even outside can use. This is a community project, right? So, it's important to do that. And then, we've actually opened up Saturday hours, after-school hours, for our own student body to be able to come in, both the wellness center inside, the weight rooms, and et cetera, and the field.
Awesome. Great.
Yeah, so we're staffing that, so even our students get more use of it.
That's awesome.
One more question?
I'd just say one thing about the fields, though, is that all the teams, you know, and the band use them. So, it isn't as, just because school is over, you know, or...
Right.
I mean, there's a lot more people on that field, like, and I always feel bad for the band because I live near there, and I hear them. You know, the poor guys, they're out there in the nine o'clock sometimes, Patterson. But it's just such a demand for the fields.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a great resource.
For the first time ever, thank you for reminding that. Tonight, three Lawrence School teams got to practice on the, the high school field. So, we're trying to give opportunities for our sports at the middle school.
Mr. Reed, one, one final question?
One final question.
They keep saying it.
We keep saying that. Just to follow up on the retention and the housing question, do you have an idea of how many teachers are coming from off-Cape, out of all of your teachers and staff?
When I, so eight years ago, I did that, and we had upwards of upper, close to 80, 80% of our staff lived on Cape. And that has decreased quite a bit. I have, I did not do it last year or this year, I've been trying to keep up, but it has been decreasing. And we just know by the interviews and who we're hiring, many, many people are off-Cape now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I guess we will move on to hear an update from the Traffic Advisory Committee. Mr. Entrow, you want to give an intro here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sergeant Oliver is getting ready. Asked Sergeant Oliver and Peter McConerty to come in and talk a little bit about some updates regarding the TAC, Traffic Advisory Committee. I can tell you this, they meet the third Mondays of every month at 9:00 a.m., right in this room. And it's probably the most attended, in terms of the public, meetings that I've participated in. Josh does a great job, he's the co-chair, and Mr. Chair and Select Board. Some of the issues that they delve into, crosswalk identification, motor vehicle parking management, and going with a thematic approach, we have an update on the parking management plan, so we thought it was an appropriate time to, to bring the TAC co-chair in. Speeding of motor vehicles, traffic circulation, they delve into a lot of really high-impact issues that have a huge impact on quality of life in neighborhoods. So, I want to applaud Sergeant Oliver for the work that he does, Peter McConerty, and some of his staff also that sit on the committee. As you all know, it's a town manager-appointed committee. But Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about some of the great things you've been doing.
I appreciate that. Good evening. I appreciate my, you know, being, the ability to come up here and speak to you guys, and let you know kind of what the TAC's doing. I know that it's a meeting we have during the week, so a lot of times, people can't make a 9:00 a.m. meeting here at Town Hall because they're working. So, I appreciate having time in the evening to actually discuss this and kind of let the town know what we're doing. I'd like to thank Peter, who, I worked midnights last night, so if I'm a little kind of groggy, I just woke up. But I'd like to thank Peter for a while. I was sleeping today, he finished up this presentation for me, and made it available, so I can kind of stumble my way through it for you. So, Traffic Advisory Committee, like the town manager stated, I am the co-chair. The other co-chair actually resigned last month, so that's going to be an open position coming up. So, I will get with the town manager and discuss that, and figure out what we can do for our placement for a co-chair to work with us. Like you said, we are a very busy committee, so our agendas are usually pretty full.
Could I just stop you for a second, Sergeant? Is there any accommodation for people who can't get to a meeting at 9:00?
So, a lot of it is people with their work schedules, they'll put in a request for something for traffic to me through email or through a phone call, and we'll discuss their issue. I'll call them or email back both of them, find out what it is. If it's something that is very pressing for them to be here and discuss, I'll try and make it so they can be here. Sometimes, if they are not able to because of work, I will discuss it for them, on behalf of them. It is kind of tough in the middle of the week, but, or in the beginning of the week. A lot of people have to work Mondays, but we seem to do all right, and most people seem to be happy with the results that we're getting from it.
Okay, thank you.
What is Traffic Advisory Committee doing to offset traffic related matters? Let's look at some of our projects up to date. So, this right here is our traffic calming policy. This was actually designed by Peter. Purpose of the policy, this policy has been developed in order to establish a structured process, consistent criteria through which the town can respond to complex traffic calming measures of town-maintained roads. When this policy can be implemented, when complex engineering, data collection, and traffic studies are required to determine and justify traffic calming measures at a particular location, applicants shall present their traffic concerns to the TAC. For more complex traffic related matters, the TAC may vote to recommend that the matter be forwarded to Public Works for a traffic calming review. The basic timeframe for a traffic calming decision is 45 days. Response time may be altered depending on department's workload. So, with this, basically, people will email me, they'll say, hey, my street is having an issue with speeding. One of the most notable projects, which we will discuss later on in this, is Minot Street. They were very concerned with the amount of traffic that was cutting through around the business hours of 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., with people cutting through to go to steamship parking lots. We'll talk more about that project later on, but this was one of them, because it's where they came to us and said, hey, we need some traffic calming. We discussed it, it went forward from us to the Department of Public Works, and then later on, you'll see the project that was designed out of it. This was a big project that the Department of Public Works came up with, the 20 mile an hour beach safety zones, and it was all the town beaches. Here are all the notable ones that they actually did. There was actually, this itself has become a item that people message me a lot about, thanking us for slowing things down around the beaches, because a lot of people walk the heights or surf drive, especially with the new sidewalks that we have out there with the water main project that went through, and the Eversource project. This has actually been a big thing for us. Also, it has helped out with Quaker Road, slowing cars down out there. We do have a speeding issue out there, which is another project, which we will talk about with Curly Boulevard and Quaker Road coming up in this presentation. This right here, Main Street and Scranton Ave Project, is right in front of the Senior Center. Most of you have gone by there over the summer and saw the telephone poles kind of stuck out on the roadway with the barrels and cones. Eversource is actually going to be out there tomorrow, working to continue removing those poles from the roadway. This is going to be a full automated, traffic-controlled intersection. The design for this is for the senior housing on Scranton Ave, both at the corner on Main Street, and also further down across from the harbor, to allow the seniors to cross safely to the Senior Center. This is a very needed project that was brought forth many times, discussing children crossing from the rec center in the afternoons, and then once the Senior Center was installed, the seniors trying to cross the roadway to get over there safely. It's a very busy intersection. The new design layout will have a turn lane also for turning onto Scranton Ave from Main Street. As you can see, when you're coming up, if you're coming from Davis Straits, you'll be able to actually turn to the left, that was a big problem in the summertime. Anybody who's gone down there trying to get to the harbor in the summertime has sat there for a lengthy amount of time, well, nobody lets you turn. This will also have a full emergency controlled light sensor, so they'll know when emergency vehicles are approaching, and it will turn the signals red, so that way, emergency vehicles can travel through safely. Any questions on that project? This project is one of our future projects coming up. It's going to be the East-West Connector. This will go connect the bike path to Gifford Street on Brick Hill Road. This will run right up, past the highway, past the new Y, the high school, and give access for a shared-use path... access for a shared-use path for pedestrians and bicyclists. This is a very big thing, I believe, for our town, connecting that west-side bike path to Teeticket in East Falmouth. Having a safe passage to with a shared pathway gets people, you know, safely away from the traffic, instead of being in the travel lanes. People know Brick Hill Road being a wooded road and not really thickly settled, people tend to go a little faster down there sometimes than they should, especially coming off the highway. Also, I believe in the future, we're going to be petitioning Mass Highway to put an on-ramp on Brick Hill Road heading southbound towards Woods Hole, which is kind of needed, because right now, as you come down Brick Hill Road, if you need to get on to head into the center of town, you have to go up 28A, and that puts a lot of traffic up through that area that is not needed, which could be changed by an on-ramp. Any questions about that? Yes?
Two quick questions. So this is the, is connector from, I guess I would say, center to west, right? Is there a plan to get from Gifford Street over to at least Sandwich, if not 28 in East Falmouth?
Once you get over to that area, there are sidewalks and crosswalks. When you get up into Brick Hill and you go in towards the highway, there are none.
So the idea is bicyclists would transition to sidewalk at that point?
Well, bicyclists could travel in the traveling. I believe we'll have the shared-use road signs and stuff like that in that area. But the pedestrians that are on foot will be able to connect them to the crosswalks and the sidewalks.
And will the bicycle, so this portion of it, it's shared-use path, and will that be physically separated from the roadway?
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Which side of the road will that be on?
It's going to be on the Gifford, Google Park side, correct?
Beyond the north side with the new Y and CAs going.
Right. Thank you, if that makes sense.
So, and as you can see up in there in the project, that'll be basically where it runs through. This section here is all the.
The town forest.
Right.
So.
And the police station.
Hopefully. I can only hope. That would be a great location for us. And I do like, I will say, that housing in the admin building was a great idea put forward by Mr. Richardson. I totally support his idea of that, so.
Doug went first. Doug went first in the idea, yeah.
Yeah. I totally, both of you, it's amazing. I totally agree. So this is the Woods Hole traffic triangle. As you know, this was kind of a busy intersection triangle setup that we dealt with a lot this summer, especially with the steamship authority, traffic, and everything coming down there. Recently, there are updates to this intersection here. There's all, down here, there's concrete barriers that actually create a consistent intersection. Also here, steamship, under advisement of myself and Peter, putting a ride-share parking lot out of the roadway to get the movers, lifts, everything out of the intersections. So it's been very helpful. The officers that have been working down there doing the steamship detail. Doing the steamship detail and everything have really noticed the difference in the amount of people sitting in the roadway and the traffic being eased up by that parking area. Also, in here, you have the top where Water Street is, which has been a known issue for well over 20 years with traffic patterns and narrow roadways. The DPW will be looking for funding, I believe, at the November Town Meeting to have a consultant take a look at the traffic triangle down there and try and figure out what is the best way to correct the traffic problems down there. Any questions? This project here is Curly Boulevard. This was a project where we did a road diet. Road diet is narrowing of the lanes to slow traffic down. If you look here, you can see there is a new shared bike lane in the roadway that has to the right side there. You can see with the crosswalks, there's a motorcycle, a couple of cars turning up there. This has actually helped out quite a bit with keeping the bicyclists separate from the traffic. The only issue we do have with that roadway is the speed limit is slightly high. I believe it's, up before that 30 mile an hour sign, it is 45. So we will be looking at drafting a letter to Mass DOT to do a road audit on that to see if they can possibly consider slowing down the speed limit there. And in that project, they'll actually be looking at Quaker Road also, heading up towards Old Silver Beach and out towards Nashewina. This project has definitely helped out with access for our bicyclists in the community, especially with the heavily traveled area going down to Old Silver Beach. Right here, we have an example of the shared road, shallow marks that we were putting on Catherine Lee Bates Road. This isn't Catherine Lee Bates, obviously, but we did use the same exact road markings to let motorists know that they are sharing the roadway with bicyclists in that area. This right here has been one of the biggest requests that we have had from the Traffic Advisory Committee. Radar feedback signs are becoming quite a common thing around every city in town in Massachusetts. A lot of it is driver feedback. A lot of drivers are driving down the road, they don't realize how fast they're going, especially Route 151, you're coming off the highway, who knows how long you've been traveling at, 65, 70 miles an hour. You get on this roadway, it's a 50 mile an hour speed limit, people tend to still go a little faster than they should. These here are examples of the radar feedback signs that were installed on that roadway. Number installed throughout the town, there are schools with six of them. The Main Street Library has two. Route 151 has six. Old Barnstable Road has two. Cypress Road, Quisett Ave have four. Curly Boulevard and Old Main Road have another two, for a total of 28. Right now, at Town Meeting, we are going for funding for two for Shore Street and two for Quaker Road in the area of Old Silver, in the neighborhood over there. Installation of these units themselves for the two of them is about $20,000 between buying the signs, installation, foundation, and getting everything set up for it. So they are quite pricey, and unfortunately, with that being the issue, many people want them for their roadway, but the town doesn't have a sustaining budget to fund every project. I believe in the future, DPW will be going for a line item for specifically electronic signing, so that way, we can hopefully provide more of these throughout the town.
Do you have any way of measuring whether they're successful?
So when I do our traffic studies for the town, I put out signs similar to this that are battery-operated. They'll collect data for about a week. With that program, I can actually show on a graph how many vehicles slowed down receiving the driver feedback. Usually, it's between a third to two-thirds, depending on the roadway and where they are. You will catch a lot more on a roadway like this slowing down when they see the sign just for the fact that they were traveling at a higher speed because they're coming off the highway. When I have on a side road, such as Queen Street, like I did last month, it's about a third. But Queen Street also is a narrow roadway and it's a side road, so it's not as popular for speeding. Thank you. Rectangular rapid flash beacons. We have a couple of those on Locust Street and Woods Hole, over at the bike path. Old Barnstable Road, Quisett Ave, Gifford Street in Dillingham, we had just installed two. That was the intersection after we had that terrible fatality. We, the DPW started that project by opening up sightlines. They cut back vegetation, they improved lighting. We saw there was still an issue out there. From there, they installed the flashing stop signs. We continued to improve this, they had an intersection with moving the crosswalk actually a little further up the road to get it past one of the utility poles that was there, because the utility pole was causing a blind spot, because people waiting to cross the road were standing behind it. So the DPW moved that. They then installed the rapid flash beacons, and it seems to be going pretty good over Project underway, Woods Hole Roads, looking at four radar units to be installed, and also, as I mentioned, the Shore Street and Quaker Road. So this right here was a project that was done a few years ago. Queens Byway, if you noticed, this was done to kind of soften up that intersection. The crosswalk was so long and wide that pedestrians really were getting lost in the roadway. Therefore, we put the island in, which kind of gives them a break in the middle. So if they're crossing, they actually have a safe spot to stop and then continue on. And not only that, this is our entryway into Main Street. It's very visible, it's one of the most traveled intersections in town. So the project has helped out, has slowed cars down that were turning onto that roadway, which made it safer for the pedestrians crossing from the coffee shop and for the intersection On Main Street, we have two projects, I believe, coming up that they're looking at, Academy Lane and Calhoun Court for the sidewalk bumpouts. For anyone who doesn't know what a sidewalk bumpout is, if you look on Main Street over by the library, the kind of crosswalk comes, the sidewalk comes out, it gives you a narrower crosswalk, which gives you a safer distance for people to cross the roadway. Plus, it also brings people out further into the roadway for vehicles to see that they're waiting to cross. I think adding these to Main Street is a great idea in areas that don't have it. It just makes it safer for the pedestrians, especially where you have some intersections and stuff that are down there that aren't well-lit at night, or just kind of tough to see people behind the cars.
Just a question while you were talking about Main Street. I've talked with some business owners in town about the potential for, you know, perhaps seasonally or on weekends, taking cars off Main Street. Have you guys considered studying that at all? Or I know it's a newish proposal.
So there is an actual Main Street parking study coming up? And I will let, discuss that with you. I have not heard anything about that yet.
Okay, yeah. Just an idea that some people came to me with.
This project here is Minot Street, which I had discussed earlier. This was used as the detour during the EverSource project. Due to that, DPW used some of that funding to actually correct their roadway with the issues that they had. They did not have a sidewalk. They were complaining about the speed issues during the morning and afternoon commutes. With this, the DPW went in, they added in new pavement, granite curbing, sidewalks. This project cost between about $250,000 to $300,000. It was a big improvement for the people in that neighborhood, and they are very happy that they now have a safe sidewalk to walk on instead of being in the roadway with the cars passing by.
How long of a stretch is that, do you know?
Minot Street, so was that a half mile?
A half mile, three quarters.
Yeah, half mile to three quarters of a mile.
Pretty cost-effective job.
So, yeah, Lawrence Lynch did a good job with it. If anybody hasn't been down there, it's, it's a nice street, it's very well-done, but the only problem is, is now that it's new asphalt and everybody's going to be using it as the cut-thruth even more. So unfortunately, with that, it kind of brings more traffic. But it's safer, at least for the residents with the sidewalk. So that kind of brings us towards the end of our presentation. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Reed first?
Yeah, well, thank you very much. You're doing a lot to keep us safe and safer as the days go by. We received one comment and then one question. We get a lot of feedback about 28A between Brick Hill and heading south of speeds.
Yep.
So anything you can do to add some safety measures in there, I think, would be great.
So actually, right now, we just did a traffic study on it. And we had thought that the speed limit was 35, and we were corrected that it was 40. So we're adjusting now on the speed-setting signs, and we're going to be doing another speed study this month. After that, we will try drafting a letter to Mass Highway about a crosswalk for one of the neighborhoods over there for the safety of the children trying to go to the school bus. We've also put it in our roll call book for officers to be out there, especially during the school bus stop times, to do some traffic enforcement. Unfortunately, it's a large area for officers because they're covering from Old Dock Road to Woods Hole. So that includes the hospital in Gosnell and some other places that are very busy. So we try getting officers out there when we can, and they have done quite a bit in that area. Right now, I know they're focusing heavily on the bus stop at Carriage Shop in Metoxic, which, if anybody's seen on Facebook lately, it was one of them people, it's one of them corners that people kind of just roll through every time they go, just because it's habit. And unfortunately, people get used to doing it, they do it once or twice, and they just continue to do it. So they've been doing heavy enforcement out there in the mornings. That has seemed to make the residents happy in the area, and it's also, you know, correcting the driving measures of the people that drive through there every day.
The other one I had was just the separation of bicycles and cars, or bicycles, pedestrians and cars, coming from the city where I actually felt comfortable biking, because it's contained and smaller and you're going slower. I find it a little intimidating to bike here in Falmouth, because the speeds are that much higher and the space is that much wider.
Right.
So I appreciate what you're doing collectively with DPW on Brick Hill. I think east to west is a huge need for commuters. I would, I would implore you to consider looking at that separate, non-sidewalk, shared-use pathway, because a sidewalk is named just that, walking, sidewalking.
Right.
Whereas shared use is a little bit bigger, people understand that you're going to be sharing that resource together. And I also implore, you know, you and DPW to think about these in conjunction with some of the sewer-ing projects that we're doing. Martha's Vineyard does, they have many shared bike paths that are sewer-based to get them off of the road, and then, you know, combining efforts there and getting some efficiencies and added benefits. But thank you for what you're doing, it's been great.
And I will say, on that project, the Bike Race Committee are huge involved in that project, and Catherine Johnson and her team have been great with helping us with projects. They attend our meeting every month, and they give us a lot of good feedback and also ideas for different projects around town to make things safer.
Yeah, but the more we can do just to separate cars and bikes.
So, and also, as far as the sewer goes, if you notice, from Woods Hole to the center of town, they actually use the bike path for the sewer for that. So.
Anyone else? Mr. Brown?
I'm curious if, how far along are we on that Route 151, Boxbury Hill intersection? We talked about that. Was it a year ago or more?
I will pass that off to.
Sitting here and listening to Josh talk, there's a lot of work going on in town. So the intersections that we're looking at are 151, Boxbury, that's the most dangerous intersection we have in town. And the second intersection we're looking at is Jones Road and Gifford, because that's the most congested intersection we have in town. But Boxbury, Sam Turner, is about 90%, 95%. We're going into easements, the easement phase, we're doing, you know, temporary easements, some permanent easements, move some of the EverSource conduits and relocating some of their boxes that are in the roadway. But over the last year, we've got so busy at Public Works, that kind of fell to the back burner. Now that we have the new deputy director, Jim Kempden, that's his priority project. He's going to be looking to push that through, and I'd like to see that go start up within the next year. We do have Chapter 90 funding to pay for that, so it wouldn't be going through Town Meeting. We're looking to see if we can get through Chapter 90 on that. It's probably, it's probably about $2.5 to $3 million project for that. It's a wide intersection.
I'm sure those speed alert signs have been helping, but.
Yeah, you go through there at nighttime, it's dangerous, flashing lights, the vehicles, it's a dangerous intersection.
After a while, people get used to them and start to ignore them, so.
Yeah.
The angles of the roadways, when they come out, you have, the headlights just don't, you don't see, it doesn't line up right if you're coming from a certain way. Coming out of Colefield, you kind of tend to be angled facing towards the east side of town, so when cars are coming up, they're not really seeing your headlights, they're seeing the side of your car.
Right.
So we're hoping to get that done in the next year, year and a half, get that out, just like the Main Street project, get that underway.
Great, thank you.
And while I have Peter up here real quick, and another project that we are working on is the Central Ave project.
Yes.
That's the realigning of the roadway when it comes up to East Falmouth Highway. Instead of kind of comes up, the road's completely straight now, brings you up to the highway, and that's where we have cars going across into.
Where that house.
Hitting the house, yes. Peter has come up with a design that's going to actually straighten the roadway and bring it up to an actual 90-degree intersection with East Falmouth Highway. This would redirect the cars away from that property and actually align them straight. So when they come around, there'll be guardrail and curbing, and then they'll be aligned straight, and then when they go straight across, there's the trees there instead of going into someone's yard or their house.
They can drive to the side of the house instead of into it.
Yes.
The guardrail's almost going to guide them, so they, they almost would have to do the loop. But that's through Mass DOT, so it's all permitted through DOT. So we have a concept in with them, and it's under review. So that'd be another project that'll be underway.
Right.
Ms. Goldstone first.
Yeah, a couple of questions, and you already answered one, which was in terms of how frequently
Yeah, a couple of questions, and you already answered one, which was in terms of how frequently you're interacting with the bicycle and pedestrian committee, and just encourage that to really continue. I'll say, from a pedestrian perspective, I completely understand the appeal of granite-curbed sidewalks as a biker. I try to avoid them, because it means you've got no place to go in a tight situation, and you're competing with pedestrians for, for the sidewalk. So, right, so thinking about all of the folks who use the roads, not just cars and walkers. So, encourage that to continue. I'm curious, in terms of your priority setting as a committee, you mentioned the volume of requests that you get, and I'm curious, how many of your projects are kind of being driven by data on accident rates and, and kind of broader data, and how much of it is, is being driven by complaints or requests?
So, I would say it's about 50/50. A lot of the requests that we get, I'll actually do traffic studies on. Right now, I just, last month, we did Queen Street, West Falmouth Highway. The month before that, we did North Falmouth, Old Main Road, County Road, Pine Street. The month before that, we had done two other traffic studies. We've done Shore Street a few times, we've done Central Ave, Mare Vista. We did traffic studies at all the beaches coming up to the project with the safety zones. So, we do quite a few, gather our data, and then we make a decision.
Do we have anything planned for the T-Ticket Highway stretch?
So, T-Ticket Highway, East Falmouth Highway, Quay Highway, those are all state-owned roadways. So, those projects become more of a state, depending on what we're doing. We'll do West Falmouth Highway, was actually one of our traffic studies last month. We'll do a study out there, and then we can come up with a request and submit it to Mass DOT. It's a lot easier when we're doing town roadways, I can just deal with the DPW directly. But, it's a little bit harder depending on that. As far as T-Ticket Highway goes, I don't think we have anything planned for T-Ticket Highway itself right now. I don't know, as far as the Tac Committee, I don't know if DPW does.
So, and this, we got a slow burn project going on out there that started in like 2017, and it was a large project that actually, when the water main went through down at Queens Byway, it actually went out to Oxbow. So, the, the goal was, is while we're doing it, let's make some traffic improvements. And it started out at $10 million, and then it went to $20 million. And then they, then going through DOT, we came up with a concept, and they said, this project's getting so big, we got to split it up to three separate projects. So, we had Main Street, which we're working on now with the, the, the byway and the, and the intersection, and we'll be doing Falmouth Heights. And then we had Davis Straits between Falmouth Heights and Sandwich Road, and then we have Sandwich Road to Oxbow. So, those projects, the DOT is still reviewing them, and we're still working with our consultant to work on that, but the cost is, the cost for those projects are really exorbitant. And going out, our park superintendent's concerned, because going out from Sandwich Road to Oxbow, there's a lot of old trees that are there that are, that would be slated to be removed, and so there's a little bit of hot burn on that. So, but it's, it's going back and forth with the state, and we're working on it, but it's been going on for about eight years now, and we're still working on it. But, the cost of it, the cost of it's going to be high, and that's something that we, we put through the tip, and we're looking to see if we can put it through the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I have one more.
One more.
Water Street, I know you talked about the congestion a little bit with the steamship. There's been a lot of proposals about parking on one side, you know, changing that intersection. The belief of the community is that, you know, you'd rather cars going slow and tagging mirrors than hitting kids. Do you, does the committee have any thoughts or received anything on, on Water Street and the congestion down there?
So, we've discussed this numerous times since I've been on the Traffic Advisory Committee. There's been suggestions of the bump outs, like, like on Main Street, to bring the entranceway of Water Street narrower, but being able to adjust the parking to make legal-sized streets. This would be where the DPW is hiring the consultant to look at the area. They're the trained professionals that are more than just an officer who's doing traffic studies, and let them actually figure out what is the best traffic adjustment for that area. Right now, we do have, at some points, a five-foot travel lane, and there have been times where I've come down the road in a police car, and it's deadlocked, and I can't get through. People get nervous, and they kind of gridlock themselves, and it locks the whole intersection up. Some people have said, oh, well, it's fine, you know, leave it. Well, at some point, when your travel lanes are way less than what it should be, you're, you're causing congestion, and we have to figure out that issue and relieve that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll move on to our next item. Get to bed earlier than midnight tonight, Sergeant.
Well, I have to go back to work now.
All right, thank you. So, in an effort to keep or to start moving our agendas to a more thematic approach, following on the Traffic Advisory Committee, we're going to hear a presentation and discussion of the downtown parking management plan. We have our Community Development Officer, Mr. Kornak. Is that the right term now?
It is.
We're getting close.
Director.
Yeah, director.
But I can take the officer.
We're getting close.
For the record, Jed Kornak. So, I am here tonight to go through, just to make sure this works, to go through and summarize the downtown parking management plan, which the town recently completed, well, recently, a year ago, this time in 2024. I, I want to start off by reminding folks in the room and folks at home that this study was free to the town. We applied to the One Stop for Growth program, the grant program, and we received $25,000 to hire STAN Tech engineers to essentially write the report, do all the analysis. The planning office did participate in the study. We did do some data collection as part of that, but we'll go through that as I make my way through. But, I just wanted to articulate that, because I think that's an important component of this, of this study. So, as I mentioned, it, we, we started this study back in 2024, and it was, it came about because, you know, at the time, the planning board was, was hearing a, a project or an application that wanted to share parking within the public realm. And so, you know, part of the conversation and questions that we had were, do we have enough space? Can we accommodate this, this new use? And so, you know, we just thought, well, let's, let's get a study going and figure out exactly what we've got. And so, over the course of, you know, six to eight months, as you can see up on the screen, our consultant interacted with key stakeholders. So, we had a municipal meeting where we talked amongst ourselves about, you know, issues that we know of, history of parking in the downtown. But then also, as you can see in task number two, they organized two successful public meetings. The first, at the beginning of the study, to do exactly what we did internally, is to ask the public what they thought about the downtown parking situation, but then, in the end in September, present the official report and all of its recommendations, which is included in this presentation. So, as I mentioned in task number three, the planning office helped with data collection. So, essentially, we walked around downtown and collected parked cars, the number of parked cars for each one of the areas, which I thought was an excellent use of our time, because we actually got to see firsthand, myself included, some of the issues that folks deal with, and especially visitors in the summer months, and how that affects circulation, but also congestion, when folks are trying to hunt for a parking spot. And then, in task four and five, our consultants, they had put together a model, which I won't go through tonight, it's a little complex, but essentially, a parking model to show us that we've got room and we can use it better. And then, they developed some strategies for us to carry forward and some recommendations. And then in task six, you can see they publicized the plan, which is available on the website. So, please don't let me move from the podium until I show everyone where to find that report, because I think the more people who read it, the more will understand that, you know, we do have capacity in the downtown, and we have, in my opinion, ways to make the circulation and the system work better. So, some of the goals, I won't go through them all, but essentially, I've sort of talked about them already. It's talk about what are some of the challenges that we have in our current system? What is our capacity? What does that capacity look like? Is it privately owned lots? Is it publicly owned lots? Do we have restrictions on how long people can be there, et cetera? And then ultimately, come up with some strategies and recommendations to make the system function better. This was our study area. As you can see, it's, it's fairly large. So, on the left-hand side of the screen, that little sort of lollipop figure is the Depot Ave parking lot that's across the street from the bus station. It essentially ran all the way down Main Street and ended right around just east of Gifford Street. We also included the Lawrence School, because some of the things that we had heard were, you know, in the summertime, folks might be parking at the Lawrence School and, and finding their way downtown. So, we wanted to get a sense of what that activity might look like, because it might fuel a future recommendation. But, as you can see, it encompassed a lot of parking lots, which are shown on this slide. So, essentially, what this slide shows is all of the parking lots that we surveyed, and it's color-coded based on the type of lot. So, anything in orange indicates that it's a private lot or it's restricted in some way. Anything in blue is a public lot that is open to everyone. And then there's some restrictions on the allowed time of stay, if you will, for each one of those lots. So, for example, Main Street has certain timeframes and, and as does the Town Hall parking lot. So, it was broken up in a way that made it somewhat confusing, but hopefully, it was digestible if you stared at it for a while. But, the idea was to sort of, sort of show the downtown parking area, but then sort of categorize it in different ways. So, overall, there were 1,662 spaces within this study area. So, I'll just go back real quick. So, in this figure, altogether, we have over 1,600 spaces. There's two slides here that I want to touch upon. This first one is all about, were those spaces on-street versus off-street? So, the vast majority, as you can see, are all off-street parking lots. There is a substantial amount of on-street lots, or on-street spaces. Those include areas like Main Street, Depot Ave, and Catherine Lee Bates. So, then the next slide's really important. It talks about that whole, that idea of restriction. So, it's roughly half and half in the study area of lots that are restricted to the public and those that are not. So, those that are restricted would be, you know, private lots behind some of the businesses in the downtown areas, such that our public spaces would be, you know, the Eastman parking lot or Town Hall. So, these next four slides show, and I want to just draw your attention to the map itself, because I'm going to go back and forward to show the utilization between May, June, July, and August of 2024. So, we did counts on the weekday and the weekend, because we know the popularity of the downtown and, you know, with its restaurant utilization, but also its shopping. So, that's generally the timeframes that we looked at. We looked at the parking within the morning period, the afternoon, and the evening. So, really quickly, what you'll see is up, especially up in that blue bubble, you'll see the utilization climb as you make your way into the summer. So, the highest full-area utilization was in, in August, and you can see the color coding indicating red would be the highest utilization, and then obviously, as you come to the cooler colors, those are the lowest utilization. But I'll just sort of go backwards, and you can see how it changes. In May, it's really low. It's right before, as, as, as you all probably know, it's right before the tourist season. In June, we started to see those numbers tick up a bit. What was interesting about this study was that the peak utilization was always lunchtime. It was always that time period, I thought, for sure, and typical parking studies indicate that it's usually the evening, but it was always the lunch period that had the highest utilization. In July, as you can see, it started to ramp up. Parking lots like this one outside, the library lot, Depot Ave, those public lots started to get that really heavy utilization, and it peaked in August. In fact, some of the data collection that I was doing in August, I was surprised by the number of people who were circulating the lots endlessly. I don't know if anyone's ever been to the Rantham Outlets, but as you leave your destination and you're walking to the, your parked car, you can feel the car sort of following you as you, and I was, I was actually collecting data and wearing a yellow vest, and people were following me through the, through the lot.
That's kind of what you were doing, probably.
Exactly, exactly. Now, it, it does lead to a recommendation, so I'm glad that that happened. But, the point was that people are really struggling to find parking spaces, especially in the evening hours in our parking lots. So, this full study area slide just essentially shows what we were just describing in, in the previous slides, but you see the peak right around July and August. However, what you are seeing, especially, if you can see my cursor, these areas here, this is indicating your capacity. So, anything that's hollow and outlined means that we still have plenty of capacity in the system. Now, that also includes the Lawrence Lot, or the, the Lawrence School Lot. So, there's plenty of capacity for other places for us to consider in the future, and not just focus all of our attention on, on the Main Street, especially the on-street parking, which is the next slide here. Main Street throughout the study period was always full. People really covet those spaces. It was difficult for us because we weren't assessing turnover, we were just assessing utilization. So, in a turnover study, we would get a sense for how long that car is actually parked on Main Street. What we did here anecdotally is that folks will park there and sometimes stay there for quite a long time. So, there's some examples of folks who are just leaving their car there all day long. So, as part of the public engagement, as I mentioned, we had two major public meetings. The first was in open house, where, you know, essentially, we just asked folks to come in whenever it was comfortable for them, tell us a story about how they park downtown and some of the challenges that they come up against. You can see up on the screen some of the things that they were looking for, improved pedestrian crossings, adding wayfinding, which is another study we're working on, adding bicycle facilities downtown, and increasing violation fees. Because some of the things, as I just mentioned, what we saw were, you know, cars are typically willing to pay the violation rather than move the vehicle and park somewhere else. We also had a survey that we had out for approximately three to four months. We had over 500 responses, which was great. It dovetailed really nicely on the Transportation Management Committee's effort in 2021, where they analyzed this whole idea of downtown circulation, and a lot of the same themes came out. How long do you stay in downtown? Roughly an hour or two, some are over an hour. Do, when you do live downtown, or perhaps work downtown, where are you parking? I think the biggest story here is that they're parking in the off-street lots, for the vast majority of folks. And then, the last public meeting was held in September of '24. This is when we rolled out all of the draft recommendations, and we asked folks, as you can see up on the screen, to sort of vote for us, you know, give, give them stickers and let us know what of the recommendations that were presented, which ones were their favorite. And so, you know, importantly, improving the wayfinding in, in downtown is really important. We hear that time and time again. Folks just don't know where the public parking spaces are. My theory is, you know, when you're driving around and you're, especially in the downtown area, the first, you know, your first eye is, is always towards not hitting someone who's crossing in the crosswalk, making sure that the car door isn't opening, and you're not hurting anyone else. The last thing you're looking for is street signage where public parking is. You really need a helper in the vehicle in order to make that happen, because it's really busy. But, importantly, improving bicycle conditions and then crosswalk conditions in the downtown. So, some recommendations. I won't spend too much time on this slide, because we're going to go through each one of them. I'll try to do it very quickly. But, the whole idea was to essentially give us a menu of options. So, this first one, you're familiar, most of you are familiar with the Shiverx Pond Improvement Project. That included a dock, which is currently in place or a platform. Part of that project was also to extend a walking path up to Lawrence School. We're still working on that initiative, but this was sort of dovetailing into that, this whole idea of utilizing Lawrence School as a off-street or a off-site parking lot in the summertimes to alleviate the congestion and the demand downtown, which I thought was a really great idea. Of course, we would need to create the path and make it visible, but also safe, and increase some lighting in that area, but make it usable for folks. And as part of that 1B initiative, if you've ever visited places like Newport or Plymouth, they have these really cool electric shuttles, basically, and they're free. You can get in, you park into the parking spot, and then you get right out into a shuttle, and it direct, it brings you free of charge right down to the downtown. So, it's, it's this really cool off-site idea to, again, reduce that congestion and, and that demand for downtown parking. Recommendation number two is to continue to pursue the shared-use path along Catherine Lee Bates, again, connecting the Shining Seat Bike Way to downtown, not only doing that with physical infrastructure, but with signage. So, that's our next phase, is our wayfinding study that we're, we're just wrapping up, and we want to make sure that, you know, we've got consistent theme of, hey, while you're biking down the, the bike path, there's really cool stuff just to your left, two minutes away, et cetera. It's another option to get folks to ride their bikes downtown. Officer Oliver mentioned this whole idea of creating safer crossings. So, I'm just going to point out... So I'm just going to point out, first and foremost, this was one of the first initiatives. So this is a parking spot right outside of Latjaveta. It was identified as an unsafe crossing because of its proximity, obviously, to the crosswalk. I've physically witnessed many people standing in that crosswalk, waiting for someone to actually see them, and it would have, tall vehicles there, it's hard to do. That parking spot has been eliminated, and so that was an initiative through this study, but also through the TAC. So we heard that from many residents, and so we've successfully eliminated one of those issues. The other two locations that he was referencing is on the screen here. This is Kahoon Court. So this is right in front of the library, and then the second half of Academy Lane, essentially creating the second part of the bump out. And that will be done, I believe, in the near term. But those are some of the things that our consultants identified as really increasing that safety for pedestrians crossing the road. Recommendation number four, which is interesting. The idea is a two-pronged approach. One, first and foremost, the image at the top was to essentially increase the amount of on-street parking. So out where King Street and Gifford Street locations is, the consultant identified the fact that the road is really wide. It could utilize some on-street parking to potentially slow vehicles down. There is a concern on our part with the fire station being right there. They do have to come out of there and make some significant turns. So that one is an idea. We don't know if that's going to be worth pursuing, but anything, of course, that we would pursue, we would run by this group and others to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And then importantly, the second image is something that we hear a lot with the downtown is off-street loading. There's constantly large trucks unloading their, you know, goods for the restaurants and whatnot. And sometimes they're doing it at inappropriate times, in my opinion. You know, sometimes you'll see them at 11 o'clock, right before the lunch rush, and there's a lot of people, and it's just very difficult for them to find space, and so they're utilizing parking spaces to make that happen. So there is one loading zone that we have currently. I've seen it utilized once. So we may want to consider signing that appropriately, but then also reaching out to the trucking companies to make sure that they're aware of it. And then explore the idea of creating new ones. Recommendation number five. This one got an awful lot of attention at the public session. So the idea of reintroducing paid parking along Main Street. I will just move on to the next slide. So recommendation number six. No, I'm kidding. I mean, it's an idea. The idea would be to clearly encourage folks to park further away, potentially utilize the path, utilize the shuttle, but reduce the demand downtown.
And not stay all day.
What's that?
And not stay all day.
And not stay all day, right. I can say this, this was not a popular option. So we'll just say that.
Mr. Cornak, can I ask two questions on that?
Sure.
First of all, might there be lessons we can learn from the introduction of paid parking in Woods Hole this summer that would inform thinking about whether it's worth trying this again on Main Street? Well, I'll, I'll stop with that one first.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, do we have those or that's like we just, but we have, we're collecting data that we can use to, to learn from?
That's my understanding, yes.
What are the ramifications for making Main Street more accessible for those with mobility limitations?
Mobility limitations? So, yeah, it, the impact would be that you would have to reduce the number of parking spaces because we've also heard that, that particular item from the disability community that they would like to see more handicap spaces, accessible spaces on Main Street. The challenge, of course, is that they're all, everyone's competing for those Main Street spots, so they're very coveted. I will say this. So after completing this study, I was invited to talk with the Falmouth Village Association. And so I got to go to the annual meeting. I, you know, sort of went through this whole item. And I would say that there's some openness, perhaps, with this whole idea of looking at the Main Street in a different way. To your point, Mr. Richardson, earlier, the whole idea of trying to reintroduce bicycles and pedestrians into your downtown and try something different and say, well, let's shut it down to, to vehicles, maybe it's two, three times a year, whatever it may be. But they were open to the idea of trying things on a trial basis to see whether or not we can start making improvements like that. So it could start with something like accessibility and improving that condition.
Worth noting, we already close our Main Street to all but pedestrians twice a year, so.
Right, right.
And I will say, Mr. Reed and I, we both lived in Washington DC, a city that's known for doing that pretty frequently. And I just felt the other day when Main Street had the trick-or-treat event, you know, there were dozens and dozens of kids and parents, and it was great, but I just, I was walking to, I go to the gym up here. I was on edge the whole time because, you know, these kids were this tall and tons and tons of cars. So I was, you know, wondering, you know, and I think this is worth a future agenda item, to actually propose, you know, certain times, a study, exactly like you said, to see what this looks like. And I'm glad that, that this was considered because I think it would be a great opportunity just to see if this is, how this impacts travel in town, you know, while also, you know, promoting safety and, you know, that's not even including, you could consider having vendors or whatever there, but just pure pedestrian traffic, I think, is worth considering at, not as a wholesale, this is what we're doing, but as a once or twice, you know, a month kind of, kind of thing.
Yeah, I would suggest if, if we're going to try something like that, that we try to have other options available for, for people who are going to park. For example, that shuttle, that off-street location at Lawrence School where you can park and you can take a shuttle in, it's nice and easy, you don't have to pay for anything, et cetera.
So that was a question I was going to ask. Is there any way that a shuttle would expand? And I know you studied this area, but is there any thing beyond that area that a shuttle might improve access to in terms of parking?
The beaches.
The beaches.
Yes. That was another, it was another component of our wayfinding study that a lot of folks don't, or at least the survey indicated that when visitors come to town, it's hard to know exactly where the beaches are. I would imagine a fair amount of folks are, you know, Googling that or getting on their phones, but when you're into the downtown, even me, I, as a new employee, when I was first here, it, you know, I, I knew they were this way, but that didn't really help me get around, so.
Because I imagine it'd probably be pretty easy to run a loop from Walker to Shore.
Yes.
Like that.
Yep.
Lee Filson, President of C. Plymouth, who purchased those vans. I have a meeting with her on Friday. And it's, you know, they, what they do is they run it also to Kingston, the MBTA, so when folks come in from Boston, we obviously can't do that, but it's full all the time. You know, every time I'm in Plymouth for work, it's, it's a tremendous how, how many people are riding that, that service.
Right. Yeah, I, I visited Newport over the summer, I think it was last year, and I was astonished by the number of people, and their shuttle is as long as your table. It's huge. So without taking too much time, the wayfinding study, as I, as I mentioned, is wrapping up, but the whole idea of communicating to residents, business owners, visitors, et cetera, where these parking lots are located, how long you can stay, et cetera, and then directing them, once they park, where are the places that they're most interested in going to, shops, restaurants, et cetera. This was another one of those items that had mixed review, we'll call it, at the, at the public session. The idea of charging folks more money is sensitive, but there is a recognition that folks may be abusing the current parking system. So there's a, there's an acknowledgement that we need to do more, there's just a concern about how much more. So it's just another tool in the toolbox. So as I mentioned, I, I won't sign up for this because I am too busy, but the whole idea of creating an ambassador program, which I thought was really intriguing, was to, you know, if you've ever been to a parking lot and you're looking for the pay station, and then there's this long line of folks, I mean, I've done it myself, just say to people, hey, look, there's a QR code you can just scan and you can pay on your app. You don't have to wait in this line, you can just go to your dinner, and you can pay while you're walking. I think it's a really good idea to sort of identify the fact that this lot's full, but this one over here to your right is wide open. So it's just a way of communicating to, especially to visitors in the summertime. And then this one is shared parking opportunities. So my time here, approximately four years, I've uncovered a lot of these informal situations that already exist, but of course, we would encourage more shared opportunities. I think folks like the Aquatic Brewery would, would benefit from, from something like that. And then this whole idea of reducing the parking minimums. Again, this is another one of those sensitive topics. I think, you know, nationwide, we're talking about reducing the amount of required parking. It is something that we are interested in pursuing, but we want to be very cautious because the last thing we want to do is create a system where there isn't enough parking, and then people are just circulating endlessly, and we've created another problem by just reducing the amount of available spaces. So those are the 10 recommendations. This is my last slide, so I'll just pause here for any questions that you might have. But the basic takeaway message here is that now that we've got this complete, our work really begins. We start going out to the public, we start holding events, we start working with stakeholders, and we start trying to identify which of these recommendations we might tackle first.
Quick one, just on this slide. Is that when you say parking minimums, are you talking about zoning reform?
Yes.
And that can also apply to our housing?
Yes, yes.
May I ask another?
Sure.
Do you have a sense for how much of the quantity of taken parking or used parking is used by employees and/or commuters? We're looking, we have that problem in Woods Hole.
Sure.
We have employees of other restaurants, you know, parking in our lots. Depot and, you know, my work with the EDIC, we've got the small parking there, but we've, we've seen an uptick in parking that are commuters coming in and either working in Falmouth or not taking the ferry over. And then I'm just, you know, extrapolating that out to Main Street, like how many folks are, are parking there because the minimums are squishy and the fines are low?
Right.
Parking there instead of parking elsewhere? Is there something we can do to help our employees and our commuters?
Yeah, so the answer to your question is no, we don't have that concrete data because that's a different type of study, yes. But the goal is to, now that we've established a relationship with the Village Association and the business owners, that would be the next step, is to try and not only identify, but also try to solve that problem of their employees potentially parking in these public lots. You know, let's find somewhere else where they can park that's not only safe for them to get to and from, but also has the capacity. Because the last thing we want to do is encourage business owners, employees to park somewhere, but in that it's full, and so we're not really living up to our, our commitment.
If we have that in Woods Hole.
Yeah, right. Challenging environment.
All right, I think we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Cornak.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will discuss and consider a vote to approve an application to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund from the Falmouth Housing Trust regarding property at 439 Pinecrest Beach Drive. Mr. Renshaw?
Is there loading the slideshow? I'll lead this off. As you all know, Falmouth Housing Trust brings a lot of great projects to the town. This, in my opinion, is an example of an outstanding project. The applicant brought to, the request to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, a request for funding in the amount of $175,000. That is $25,000 higher than what we typically grant for projects, but this project, as you're going to hear from, from Laura in a moment, is very unique, and, and it utilizes an existing home, they purchase a home for, for a reduced price and then sell it to a qualified homeowner, affordable, make it affordable property. So, and I think in my mind, the best part feature about this type of a project is that it's an existing home, and it doesn't require any kind of clear cutting or land, land disturbance activity. We're just basically moving a family in quickly. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you. For the record, I am Laura Moynihan. I'm the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Trust, and this is 439 Pinecrest Beach, and thank you, Mr. Renshaw, for your words and recommendation. This is an existing three-bedroom ranch house in the Pinecrest Beach neighborhood of Falmouth. It's a home that has been upgraded recently. This is the lot, so it's actually about a half acre of land, and this is showing the rear of the house with the new roof, new shingles, new windows, new deck, so lots of improvements. Here are some more photos showing the backyard, which has a beautiful wooded buffer and a back lawn area, and the basement access, which is a second means of egress. The basement is unfinished. It has about 1,040 square feet of finished space on the first floor, three bedrooms, two full baths, as I said, a brand-new deck, and an unfinished walkout basement. We are proposing to resell this at $399,000. The market purchase price was $600,000, so it'll be a significant reduction for a household earning up to 120% AMI. It would be deed restricted in perpetuity, so any resale of the home in the future would have to be under the same household income limitations. And for a family of four, that's up to $164,000 right now. So some of you may say, well, that seems like a lot, but the reality is that families here with the median sale price in Falmouth at about $850,000, a family really needs to have a household income of $200,000 or more to qualify for a mortgage. So this is really what we're seeing is this middle income or middle class is really, it's out of reach for them to be buying market-rate homes. So this house is move-in ready. We, you know, are always looking at homes. This one came across my desk, and it, and that was the key, it was move-in ready. So a lot of homes we look at need new windows, new roof, new this, new that, you know, it's ching, 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 you're walking through the home, you know, 10,000 here, 15,000 here. So, so when this one came across, it, it had everything pretty much done. And so here's the floor plan showing the three bedrooms and the two baths. It's, it's a classic, you know, ranch house built in 1984. Primary bedroom, you can see the new flooring with the attached bath, and the hallway, again, the new flooring, new paint, new doors, et cetera. And I put the list of improvements in your package as well. There's some bonus features, a whole-house generator, the mini-split system for AC and heat, the full walkout basement, and all the appliances are included, including the washer and dryer. So, and also, the owner may join the Pinecrest Beach Association, which is really neat because it's close to that, and for, I think it's $50 a year, might be a little bit more, but it's not a monthly HOA, it's just a one-time membership fee to be able to use the beach and the kayak racks and the playground. So the, the breakdown of costs, this is in your package, I'll just run through it quickly. The purchase price at 600, the fees and carrying costs, and this is how we get to our total project budget at $625,107. And when we break down that, we subtract the resale price. If the board is inclined to grant the request for the $175,000, it means that the Falmouth Housing Trust would be putting in about $51,000 of donor funds. So that's taxpayer funds as well into, into the resale project. So that is our application. We'd appreciate your support for the funding, and as Mr. Renshaw said, you know, these market rate flips, we call them, they are really the quickest and most efficient ways to house our workforce families because we can buy the property and resell them in about three months. And with the way things are going with permitting and land acquisition and building, you know, our Wacoit Highway project right now, our five-unit project, that's two and a half years, you know, to get to this point where we're looking at occupying those homes. So there's a lot more involved in that, a lot more money involved in that. I know that, you know, that, that these, these, these transactions really, you know, it's one house at a time, but they really do work and get people, get people housed. So we'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
I'll just say, I'm part of the working group that had this come before us. I'll just say, I'm part of the working group that had this come before us and we struggled with it. Our current guidelines, as Mr. Renshaw mentioned, were $150,000. But we felt that this was a very unique situation as, you know, no clear cutting, move-in condition, a nonprofit developer. So that was where we landed on recommending 175 for this project. So, Mr. Brown?
How can we apply local preference to this project?
Well, we can't really because it's only one home. So typically, when you only have one home, you know, it could be construed as discrimination, quite frankly. If you have more than one home, then you have the ability to make one local preference and one not. But this program of marketing this home and selecting buyers will be from a ready-to-buy list as it stands already, which is being marketed locally. So that in itself keeps it more local. It's not going out on the MLS. It's not going out on, you know, that type of advertisement. But I don't think that we can employ local preference.
That sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
On that point, and I believe this is correct, if we adopted the seasonal communities designation, we would be able to.
Possibly for municipal employees and, you know, artist housing. I mean, it depends on how those regulations shake out. But, yes, there would be some more flexibility, I think.
And then my only question, and I understand you kind of answered it with the timetable. This is a much quicker turnaround. This property looks large enough where you could put an ADU on it. And, you know, I saw a piece that was in the news the other day of where there's starting to be prefab, where you can put them down and they're in less, you know, months, plural time, just one or two months. Is that going to be a consideration for projects, perhaps? Is, if, you know, maybe requesting the board would appropriate extra funds to build an ADU or something like that? Or I'm just thinking that, looking at the map, it looks like there's plenty of room to put an ADU on the property.
Well, certainly with, you know, these over 80% AMI funding projects, no offense to the state, but when the state's not involved, there's a lot more flexibility in what you can do. The issue with the ADU is that, you know, if, say, the Falmouth Housing Trust was acquiring these properties and then reselling them, it would be up to the housing trust perhaps to build that, you know? And then there would be, there would be a lot of additional costs. So I think you'd have to, plus the length of time that the trust is carrying the property until that can materialize. But you'd also have to figure out how to separate the principal unit from the ADU. And my understanding is that you may not be able to sell them separately.
Interesting, yeah.
Because it's supposed to be accessory to the principal dwelling. So some, there are some theories that you could create a condominium and sell them separately, but it would be pretty complex. So I think there's a funding issue. There's a timing issue. If a homeowner purchased the property and had it deed restricted and the homeowner wanted to build an ADU, then it would, that would be an issue of, you know, is the homeowner going to be recovering those costs if they resell the property? So I think if a homeowner was going to do it, they would probably be somebody that was going to stay there for the rest of their life, you know, which is possible. And a lot of these deed-restricted homeownership homes, they really don't resell very often. So that's a possible option. And this property certainly is kind of ripe for that because it has a basement with two forms of egress and it also has some additional land area. But I think it's complicated. Not impossible.
Yeah, no, that's why I wanted to ask you. You're the expert on this, so I appreciate it.
Anyone out, Ms. Goldstone?
Thank you for bringing this project to us. I think this whole model, just of buying and deed restricting properties, right? It's not actually any new development. It's just converting our existing housing stock to something that's actually affordable. And that's terrific on any number of fronts. I'm less worried about the local preference thing because I feel like a family at that income level looking for a family home, it's not somebody looking for a second home and they're probably not looking to buy on the Cape to commute to an hour off Cape because they could buy something closer to that job for cheaper than this. So we're probably getting somebody who wants to be in this community if they're taking advantage of this. I'm curious if you could just put a little bit more color on the 25,000 above the recommended limit, right? What made that extra 25,000 from the town and your costs, the Falmouth Housing Trust cost 50 instead of 75,000 for this project? Why is that so critical?
Well, because of the gap between the cost of a market-rate home in move-in condition, you know, 600 is a very reasonable price for a home that's in this kind of condition. I mean, there are homes on the market that we look at that are in the mid-fives that, you know, need $100,000 worth of work. So when you start at the 600, you have to look at what you can resell for. And we have to set the resale price. We could set a higher resale price to reduce that funding gap. But then we're limiting our pool of buyers because the higher you go, the less opportunity you have for buyers who can actually afford the mortgage every month based on their income. So at 600, when you subtract the sale price that we think is doable for a good pool of buyers so that we can actually get people in and get somebody in in three months, we have a gap at 75,000. So for a nonprofit to put up 75,000, you know, quite frankly, in our view, when the money is available in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, that's why we made the request for the extra 25 to help out with that gap of about 75,000. And so, you know, as I said in my application, you know, our position is that the guidelines are guidelines. The Select Board can, we think, do whatever you want, you know? And if you do feel you need to kind of hang your hat on some factor, I think it could be that the development here, the quote "development," is actually the resale of an existing home and that the costs involved for advertising lottery, carrying costs, you know, other fees are development fees, pre-development fees. So there is a way to fit it within the box. And so that's really the rationale for the request. Did that answer your question? And the other thing I just want to mention is these are first-time homebuyer homes only. So it's not a second-home market. These are, they have to be first-time homebuyers for these homes. And what we are seeing at this 120% AMI level is exactly what you said, Ms. Goldstone, is that it really is people that want to stay in this community, people that, you know, grew up here, that their parents are here, their family members are here. And what we are also seeing, a trend, is that their parents are helping them buy these homes to bring them, even though they're at 120%, bringing down the mortgage, monthly mortgage, so that they can become eligible because the more, because they could have $125,000 in assets. And that would include any down payment monies gifted to them from family members. So we are seeing a trend now generally in, not just this home, but other lotteries where parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, they're stepping up to keep these kids in the community. So.
Well, and I know you're talking about the adult kids who are buying it, but as a three-bedroom house, it's probably a family with kids, which helps our schools and those enrollment numbers we were seeing earlier tonight. And especially in the location near Jenkins Pond, really attractive for families, so.
And just aside, I'd be concerned about the commuting teachers. I'd love to know what that percentage is. You know, that's an issue.
Someone ready to make a motion?
Just one more question.
Oh, okay.
Have, given that this house is in such great condition and has a generator, which is sort of beyond what you would normally do, did you ever give any consideration to maybe even higher than 120 to close that gap? Maybe, I don't know if there's such a thing as 140?
We didn't really think about 140. You know, I think we felt that, that we weren't really eliminating anybody because of the income limits at the 120 level. I mean, a family of four, that's 160. So, you know, we just, we could have put it up to 140, but was there a funding issue with the? Kim might be able to address that better than me.
It wasn't so much trying to, we do have in the guidelines that we can go up for homeownership up to 140, not in the rentals, because then it becomes a market rate at 140 AMI. But if you do 140, you can close that gap, but we really need some 120s. Going up 25,000 over what the guidelines are suggesting, we felt strongly that when we're out in the community and we're, for instance, the town-owned land, we're hearing a lot that we don't, we want to keep open space. We can't do everything. This is a tool in the toolbox. And so we thought, as a working group, that where you don't have to cut down more trees. It's not a new build. Someone can get in there sooner. We would like to actually, at a later date, come with a revised guidelines to you all to request that you go up to 175 for pre-existing homes, just like this model. Because we're, in a sense, buying the deed restriction in perpetuity and the turnover is much faster. So even though it says 150 now, we were hesitating as well to go beyond that. But the more we talked about it, and there's not a lot of land left to build affordable housing, we need as many tools in our toolbox, we're not going to see a lot of opportunities like this. We're just not. People want to make the profit on it. For-profit is not going to make any profit on this. It's going to be nonprofits that are going to do this. It's very limited. So if we can buy a deed restriction in perpetuity, I think it's worth that extra funding. And we would like to come back, the working group, at a later date to request it be put in the guidelines. I don't know if that helps at all.
Thank you.
I move that the Select Board, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, grant $175,000 to Falmouth Housing Trust to purchase a market-rate single-family home to then sell at $399,000 and attach a deed restriction in perpetuity at 120% of the area median income and to authorize the town manager to execute the documentation, setting forth the terms of the financial award to the Falmouth Housing Trust.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to us. Okay, the next item is to discuss and consider a vote to submit a letter in support of the Rail to Trail Bicycle Path Project. I'm going to ask Mr. Renshaw to give an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring to the Select Board's attention a couple of letters that are at your desks from Congressman Keating. One is dated today to the Chair, Ms. Gallery. And one is dated March 7th of 2023, indicating the Congressman's support for Rail to Trail. I'm going to give, for the benefit of the audience, I think most of the Select Board is kind of aware, but just give an overview. If constructed, the proposed Bourne Rail Trail project, Rail to Trail, removing the F2 tracks and converting that to a bike trail, would utilize existing Falmouth Secondary Rail Line or the F2 to close about a six-and-a-half-mile gap between the Cape Cod Canal Path and the Shining Sea Bike Way. Once the proposed project gets completed, it would connect the towns of Falmouth, Bourne, and Sandwich and create about 24 miles of uninterrupted multi-use path. This is important. I had an opportunity back in September of 2023 to meet with the Falmouth Bike and Pedestrian Committee and additional, some members of the Bourne, friends of the Rail to Trail. And they indicated to me that a pretty significant economic benefit potentially, $10 to $15 million. I'll let some others that are more up to speed on that. And that number may have changed, but potential significant economic impact to closing that gap and making that connection. There's a lot of information in your packet. What I'm going to try to do is kind of summarize some of the information. As you all also know, this F2 line, the Falmouth Secondary Rail Line, currently serves, connects the Upper Regional Transfer Station, which is a vital part of the Upper Cape Municipal Solid Waste System. The Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station is currently operated through an intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Falmouth, Mashpee, and Sandwich. In 2022, the town of Bourne, which was a member, opted to pull out from that IMA. I cited, I repeated a citation of some data. I think it's relevant. I want to get it out there so that the Select Board, again, has all the information it needs to make an informed decision. It is an often-used transfer station. The current vendor provided this data to us about a year and a half, two years ago. Six to eight roll-off container trucks per hour, 50 to 60 per day. Monthly tonnage received at the facility, again, this is the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, averaged annually is about 2,100 tons of CND and about 170 tons of municipal solid waste, the traditional trash, family trash. I also made reference to a couple of reports that are included in your packet. The Mass DOT has recognized the value of utilizing rail transport of solid waste to remove trucks, truck traffic, from our roadways, congested roadways. To the extent that the agency, the Mass DOT, has subsidized for the past several years some of the heavy equipment procurement on the site of the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. I also referenced a report from the Cape Cod Commission that identified the use of alternative methods to trucking to transport waste, encouraged alternative methods to trucking to transport waste, and mentioned, in fact, that encouraging additional use of the two existing transfer stations, one in Falmouth and one in Yarmouth, would be important. To give a little bit of, kind of bring this to the contemporary, there's been a lot of interest generated lately in bringing this issue back to the Select Board. And I'll just kind of, again, a couple of letters have been generated from the Select Board to the Governor's Office. 2019 was the first. The most recent letter was in 2023, December of 2023. In September last month, the Falmouth Bike and Pedestrian Committee voted to ask the Select Board to consider a letter to Governor Healy's office that would support the Rail to Trail, again, removing the existing rail that services the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. There's been a lot of support from the Friends of Bourne, the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail. I cited also some information included in your packet that, from that website, the Bourne Friends of the Rail Trail, in addition to the economic impact that I've talked about, there's a lot of interest in, again, connectivity and closing that gap. Importantly, and I wanted the Select Board to be aware of this, again, as an additional piece of information, according to the website, Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail, the organization received notice from the Mass DOT back in August of this year, late August, that the Falmouth F2 railroad tracks would not be removed at the time, according to that post. Again, it's on the website. Mass DOT position was that it would be less expensive and take less time to construct a pathway with the track than by removing the track. I understand they're currently, again, looking at that site and watching a video from, I think it was during the month of August, Phase One, Mass DOT is currently in Phase One design, I believe, of that kind of alternative utilizing a roadway, a rail adjacent to an existing roadway, I believe in the village of Pocasset. All that being said, I am concerned. I was concerned in December of 2023, and those concerns remain. I use the word non-viable. By removing the tracks, it would make that, our Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station unviable or non-viable. My concern is that it would make it certainly, by removing those tracks and that connection, it would certainly make that transfer station less economically advantageous. Because, let's face it, having that rail transport, that spur, and being able to move trash off the Cape via rail is a lot less expensive than by putting it on a truck. And I cited some data as far as the number of trucks. So my concerns about the viability and the effectiveness of that transfer station, should those tracks be removed, remains. those tracks be removed, remains. It remains my recommendation that the Select Board not support the Rail to Trail, but I understand the public sentiment and the public input that the Select Board has received over the past year, certainly. And then wrapping up, again, leading up to the September 5th vote by the Bike and Pedestrian Committee to reconsider. So I wanted the Select Board to know. My recommendation, it's, I think, based on strong data, the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail and our Falmouth Bike and Pedestrian Committee also come with strong data and support of a Rail to Trail. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have or entertain some comments.
Sure. First, I want to thank you for, you know, an exhaustive information in the, in our packet. I do have to question DOT's conclusion, considering a one-half-mile extension is going to cost over $10 million, and that's why that didn't proceed. So I must question DOT's logic with respect to that. And with all due respect, I understand your concerns with respect to removing the tracks and what it might mean for the transfer station, but I don't think it would be nonviable. I mean, that would mean it would go away, and I don't think it would go away. It may be a little bit more costly, possibly not quite as efficient, but it certainly would remain viable, in my opinion. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Richardson.
I was actually going to request, Mr. Chair, would it be possible to take public comment from people here before discussing?
We can certainly do that. I mean, I'm.
I know we have a lot of people here on both sides, I think, of this issue, and I would like to hear their opinion, if that's acceptable to go out of order than traditionally.
We can certainly, we can certainly hear public comment. I just would caution you not to be repetitive necessarily with your comments. I think we all are pretty familiar with the positions of many of the people here in the audiences to how they feel about it, but I'm certainly willing to entertain public comment. There's a gentleman apparently ready to speak, has been there for a while, so if you don't mind introducing yourself. We're going to limit public comment to about two minutes and, you know, move forward. So, thank you.
My name is Michael Feingold. I live at 88 Palmer Ave here in Falmouth, and I'm also on the Board of the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail. We are asking you to vote for the Falmouth Secondary Track removal and to send a letter to the Governor stating that fact. The most important part is Rail to Trail will cost around 20 million. Rail with Trail will cost 70 million plus. That's an enormous difference. It involves taking of land by eminent domain, building 11 bridges. It's just too costly. It will never happen that way. It's unfair to the people of Bourne that have voted overwhelmingly to support this and who. They want Rail to Trail.
Thank you.
And I'll keep it brief because we have other people that would like to talk.
Sure. Ms. Jansen? Thank you, Mr. Feingold.
Thank you, Chairman Gally and Select Board. My name is Catherine Jansen. I'm the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I'm also on the Board of Friends of Falmouth Bike Ways and on the Advisory Board of Vision Zero Cape Cod. A lot has happened in two years. In 2023, there was thinking that we could still do this. It would be messy, there'd be land takings, lawsuits, et cetera, but it still could be done. But that half a mile in Phase 1, I beg to differ from Mr. Feingold, came out at 10.1 million. There are 13 half-mile segments. Simple math says that's 130 million. That's not accounting for the bridges, 11 bridges, and for 14 land takings. Ain't going to happen. Over 3 million in removal of contaminated soil and remediation is included in that 10 million. We have a chance now to design a new track. So a new track and a Rail to Trail would cost less than Rail with Trail. So we could have a new track as part of the bridges, could come straight down MacArthur, could have a spur to the Upper Cape Transfer State, Regional Transfer Station, could have a spur to the military if needed. It would support passengers and freight. We have the opportunity to create a long-term vision for the Upper Cape that includes multimodal transportation for pedestrians, cyclists, and I would encourage you to think of commuters. I have someone on my Bike Committee who rides up to Pocasset for work every day. And have modern rail. We do have that opportunity to do both things, not one or the other. So I'm encouraging you to begin work on this long-term vision for the Upper Cape that would be multimodal transportation and modern rail. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael, I don't have much to say, other than I.
I appreciate that, but.
The viewers at home won't hear you from back there.
We need to, we need to have you there.
Good projection, though.
Michael Race, I'm from Monument Beach. My only question is, could we hear the letter that the Senator wrote about what he had to say in his letter today? I was just curious.
It's from Congressman Keating. I'm happy to, I'm happy to read it. Dear Chairman Gally, I'm writing to confirm my continued support for the conversion of the Falmouth Secondary Rail Line, F2, from an active rail line to recreational bicycle and pedestrian paths, perennale to trail in the town of Bourne. And I am also enclosing a copy of a letter I sent to Governor Healy in March 2023 in support of the Rail to Trail on the F2, and my position remains the same. The most cost-effective and efficient path toward, I'm sorry, most efficient path forward is to take advantage of the $20 million federal funds and move forward with Rail to Trail. The Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority was able to set aside 20 million in federal funds for the construction of the Rail to Trail on the F2 line through the hard work and leadership of the late Tom Cahill. In my opinion, the starkest and most compelling argument for continuing to support Rail to Trail is the incredible cost savings it delivers to taxpayers. Feasibility studies indicate that converting the corridor entirely into a path is the least expensive alternative, with initial estimates around $9 million. Conversely, attempting a Rail with Trail design will be an exorbitant undertaking, with current estimates for that approach soaring to over $80 million. Rail to Trail will be a net benefit to the community because it is not only achievable with existing federal funding commitments, but it also delivers a superior, safer, and continuous recreational amenity. In a time where federal funding prioritized, in a time where federal funding priorities are shifting away from projects like this, we must take advantage of any remaining federal funds. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to my District Director, Michael Jackman, at 508-746-9000. I will say that I'm not absolutely sure where the $20 million in federal funding that the congressman is referring to. I'd love to see it, but in any event, I think the letter clearly indicates his support for the concept of the Rail to Trail. I won't bother reading a similar letter he sent to Governor Healy back in March, so.
Unfortunately, that 20 million, time is running out.
Certainly is.
It'd be well conceded that it's too late for that.
Mr. McConity.
Good evening, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. I am on the Board of Managers for the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. It's myself. It's the Director of Public Works for Mashpee, Catherine Laurent, and the Director of Public Works for Sandwich, Paul Tilton. We currently, actually recently, we just approved, each of the towns, all three towns, approved a 17-year extension to the IMA and currently writing to the intermunicipal agreement. And then currently, the project is on the street for it to go out for an RFP, and it's actually gaining a lot of momentum. There's three, it went out on Friday, and the street contractors that are interested and operate in that facility. So it's not just Cavosa anymore. So with that, we're looking forward to put that out to bid and having another contractor or Cavosa back in there on January 1st for the duration on the next contract. I will say, you know, I've heard the concept of moving the track and putting a track in another, a different area. That's all well and fine, but from my point of view is if that's going to be the case, that really needs to be designed and built first before the tracks are removed, because building the tracks, a $10 million cost for dealing with roadways, I know what roadways cost, $10 million for a half-mile or a three-quarter mile does not seem out of the, out of the realm for me when you're dealing with going over horizontal, vertical curves, train tracks, doing all the permitting. So if that would be the case, I would like to see the train tracks designed and built, and then start talking about removing the, removing the existing tracks. So currently, the town manager had talked about the trucks and the trucks going over the bridges. In the next five years, seven years, those bridges are going to be under construction. So there's going to be a limited mobility to be able to get off the Cape. I can tell you that the Falmouth trucks alone, that's five trucks, they make a roundup twice a day, five days a week, to the Bourne facility. So they got to go to the Bourne facility, and they go out, they got to round out, and then come back down. That's a lot of truck traffic on the road. For the rail traffic, the rail traffic, those rail cars take about 100 tons, and the roll-off container trucks take about three tons per container. So one rail car would take about 30 to 35 trucks off the roadway for going over the bridges. So for us, that's a substantial difference in amount going over the bridges. So for the Board of Managers and speaking for the different towns, I would like to see if that was going to be a concept for the rails that are going first before the rails, the existing rails be removed. And like I say, there's getting some additional contractors up there looking to bid on this next contract. We already have the IMA, the next contract is coming into place, and there is a representative from the Joint Base Cape Cod that sits on as a liaison for the base with the Board of Managers.
Is my understanding correct, Mr. McConity, that the representative from the Joint Base specifically asked that any RFP be limited to two years?
With the disposition of the property and the changes going on at the Cape, they asked for it to be for two years. But right now, that facility is being used for MSW, and it's being used for CND. Specifically in the, in the RFP that's going out, there's proposals that that can be used for road salt coming in in the wintertime, that can be used for wastewater sledge being moved off the Cape, because everyone, there's nowhere to bring wastewater sledge. There's two plants down on Rhode Island, and one of them is closed right now. So that's going to be, that's for all the Cape Cod towns, but that's going to be a big consideration for our wastewater superintendent at the plant. It can be used for water, it can be used for compost facility, being able to move compost off the Cape. So instead of just thinking of being CND and MSW, I think we need to look at really what the concept that rail, that rail can be used for to go bringing over the Cape. And just keeping in mind that those bridges are going to be under construction in the next five to seven years, so things are going to change for the traffic coming on and off the Cape.
Governor Healy could take that into account as well when she makes her ultimate decision, but, you know, how we feel about it may be important as well. Mr. Reed first.
Mr. McConity, is there a cost difference between, I'm totally new to this, so I'm going to claim ignorance, is there a cost difference between shipping off via rail versus truck in, per unit, call it a metric ton, whatever it is? Is there a cost difference, and what is it?
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers for a cost difference, but there is a cost difference. If, right now, we go through Bourne, if we went through that, through the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, the contractor for, that's doing the trash contract for Bourne is actually looking at putting a bid in for that, and we're being told that the numbers could be considerably lower than, than what we're, right now, we're paying $71 at Bourne, it could be considerably lower than that. So if, if that went away, Bourne would be the one facility on the Cape. Landfills are going away. There's not many landfills left in Massachusetts, several. And if Bourne, at some point in time, is going to be coming up on that same thing, they're going to be coming up with the limitations that they have at that facility. We continued with another five-year agreement with Bourne, but things happen at landfills. If there was a fire or something happened at a landfill and they had to close, then you wouldn't have another option to get off the Cape. I'll give you, for an instance, just real quick, I've been well over two minutes. The town of Bourne, two weeks ago, their contractor up and told them, their trash contractor up and told them, we're out of here, we're leaving at the end of the year, see you later. So Paul Tilton was calling me in a panic, saying, what do I do? I don't have any other options to go. What do you, what do you do? What do you do with the town of Bourne? We have to haul it. So it's a very real situation. It just happened to Bourne, could happen to Falmouth at some point in time. So to have different options would be, would be, to me, that would be the viable.
Thank you.
Option, have different options.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
I'd like to follow up on what Ms. Jansen said. I had a similar conversation with Susan Shepard earlier today about, let's all get on the same team and get this, advocating for this new rail spur, because it's obvious that the Rail to Trail is the practical way to build that path, but to give up the rail now without the guarantee of the new rail. I mean, I'd like to see it built first, but we would also like to see this in our lifetimes. If we could at least get it onto the tip and make sure that it's a guaranteed project that's funded and going to happen, I'd be willing then to go to the Rail to Trail. But until we're at that point, it's just, it would not be responsible of us to eliminate this valuable resource that we have. So I just, I live right next to the tracks. My son-in-law and his wife live right up in Monument Beach, right next to where the track goes through. I would love to ride my bike up there, but that would be selfish of me to do that for myself when I have a responsibility to this town for the future.
So, so Mr. Brown, are you suggesting that a letter of support with the condition that it have some reference to the tip and the rail spur that we're talking about, but a letter of support at this point with that condition? Are you, would you support that?
I would prefer that if it's within the scope of what's posted on the agenda, or we could have another meeting to talk about it further if needed.
No.
I would go a step further, I think, and I really like the vision that Ms. Jansen put forward, right? The Upper Cape deserves a 21st century transit and transportation system, and that means multimodal, long-distance transit. That also means 21st century rail, both for cargo, not only the current use of this rail line, but potentially additional cargo to get more trucks off of our roadways and alleviate more congestion, and also passenger transit to get folks between here and Boston, whether it's folks commuting from here up to Boston for the day, or folks coming down who could pretty quickly get from a train down to the ferry. You know, frankly, the way they used to be able to, straight train from Boston all the way straight to the ferry without the additional congestion here. And so I guess in framing that letter to the Governor, and frankly, also to our other state representation, I would say, yes, it is conditional support for the bike path, but it is a more comprehensive, we need to see that, that commitment to rail and to 21st century transportation for the Upper Cape from the state level, including the bike path, but not just focusing on the bike path.
If I could just.
Yep, Mr. Brown?
One more thought. So another thing that came to mind, thinking the big picture of this, is not just connecting to Bourne, but, you know, where that loop goes around, where it currently goes to the transfer station, that might not be needed, because maybe, I know that the town of Bourne is planning to build a new transfer building because their CND building is getting out of, it's wearing out, and the current location where they process the CND is going to be extended, you know, part of the landfill is going to be expanded, and the transfer station is going to be moving to the rear of the site. And so that train track could come right alongside, maybe it would go perhaps a tunnel. This is way beyond the scope of this.
Yeah, I think we're moving a little beyond.
I'm going to leave with the last thought.
The agenda here.
Suggesting that just make a letter tonight for this, but we could continue on that little loop around, get past Route 151, make use of that bridge that's there under the 151, and make a place where we could make a connection to that bike path, I mean, that shared-use path up Route 151 like Mashpee's done. So that, that's a meeting, you know, a discussion for another day, but I'd like to get a big-picture vision for this.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just, I mean, I agree that the, the design for the new bridges gives us a perfect opportunity to have a win-win here, to provide some 21st century rail transport, and at the same time, the bike path that, and the connection that there's an overwhelming amount of support here in the town of Falmouth for that. So, yes, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I spent three weeks in Japan this summer. I got in a car once and I.
I got in a car once and I lost 10 pounds. So, and that's with the alcohol consumed in a foreign country. So I will say that I think that Ms. Jensen and Vice Chair Goldstone are absolutely correct, where I think that if we are to support this, it should be conditional. And I know that both Senator Fernandez and Representative Mocley have bills. Senator Fernandez's bill would bring commuter rail in the short term, you know, in the next year, to Buzzards Bay, but Rep. Mocley's bill would bring commuter rail over the bridge, like it used to be. So I think that, aligned with our representative and Senator, I think that that vision supports what's happening on Beacon Hill right now, and also aligning with the governor's priorities of, you know, how do we get more cars off the road, how do we meet our climate goals, while at the same time being fiscally responsible? Because I think we do need to look at, yeah, I think Mr. Muscally does make a, or Mr. Brown, whoever made it, with the question of, is this 20 million actually real? We'll have to find out, I hope it still is. But I think that any-
I think it had to be spent by the end of this year.
There's, our office, Senator Fernandez's office has heard different things, so it is a, it is a serious question, though. So with that being said, I think that puts the extra emphasis on being fiscally responsible in this scenario.
Probably designed the whole thing.
So, yeah. So I, I agree that any letter that we would consider, I think, needs to emphasize the need for a future that includes rail, and not 50 years from now, but in the next 10 years or sooner.
Well, there is a tip that it would-
Five-year-
-be part of, the five-year-
Yeah.
-transportation plan. So is there a consensus on a motion to, to direct the-
Do you want to hear more? We kind of interrupted their comment.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if there's more comment that can add something to what we've discussed, by all means.
Timora Race, I'm on the board of the Friends of the Bourne Railroad. I appreciate all you're saying about the long-term planning for rail, and we, and we support that. I would urge you not to tie this smallest project, six and a half miles, to something that is much greater and bigger, and is going to take a lot longer. One is because there's been no discussion about the 90-year-old railroad bridge, and already the Cape Flyer, which is wildly popular in the summer and oversubscribed, it's a seasonal train that, I don't know if you're familiar with it, Iranus.
Hyannis.
They applied to the Army Corps of Engineers to have more crossings, because it's wildly supportive, and the Army Corps of Engineers said, "We're not going to raise and lower that bridge anymore." Their charge is to keep the canal open, which makes sense if you think of it, if there was any disaster on the bridge, we would need barges and all kinds of, you know, emergency vehicles or boating to be able to get, to solve the emergent, you know, the problem. So that's a huge problem. We're going to spend 400, what, $4 billion on the Sagamore Bridge, probably that much on the Bourne Bridge, whenever that gets done, that money isn't even allocated. I don't know where you're going to find the money to invest in a 90-year-old railroad bridge that already has limited crossings because of its age and because it has to keep the canal open. So I support commuter, commuter rail to Buzzards Bay, I think it's great. You already have the line along the canal that, that can take, you know, the seasonal train. I'd like to see that seasonal train be larger, it goes to Hyannis. Freight, I think freight's probably going to be on barges, you know. I'm not an expert, if they want to bring it on, on the trail and down the canal or whatever, that's fine. But I would urge you not to tie this six-and-a-half-mile missing link that would be a huge economic benefit to the entire canal region and the Upper Cape, including Falmouth. I mean, it connects Woods Hole to Sandwich, and the Cape Cod Commission's vision is all the way down to the Cape. I would really urge you not to tie this six-and-a-half-mile project, which is practically shovel-ready except for the track, and, you know, it's going to be two years of track, because we got to go to the federal board to have that track abandoned anyway, which at this point could probably happen, given that it's only used by one private contractor. And also, you know, quite frankly, the idea of sledge moving through our coastline is a little alarming. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that line, it runs all along our fragile coastline through marshes and everything else. Now, we've already had a fire on one of the, the cars that went through, it didn't go through, but if it did, and then, you know, it's, it's, it's an environmental problem. So I would urge you not to tie this to that, largely because of the railroad bridge, which I, has not been discussed, without any discussion with the Army Corps of Engineers, saying, "Is that possible to bring commuter traffic over it to the Cape?" You know, onto the Cape. That's my comments. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Janson?
Catherine Janson, Chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I just wanted to note that we specifically did not put the "how" in our letter to the Select Board. So we didn't say, "Put it on the tip," who knows if it would be funded that way or through federal rail funding or some other methodology. I know that Rep. Viera is very keen to get rail coming across the canal to the Cape, and has the resources to find that out. So we deliberately did not put the "how" in there, knowing that the timing of these would not be contiguous. It will take a couple of years to pull the F2 line, and it'll take a couple of years to get funding for rail. So why could you not start in parallel? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, I think what, what I would recommend is, if the Board is agreeable, that we ask the town manager to work on a letter that maybe he could have for us at our next meeting on November 3rd, to, to consider support for the, for the project with-
About December 1st, Mr. Chair, that's a little bit-
Okay.
-realistic.
All right, so by December 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next week is a little quick.
All right, yeah, that's true, and we have town meeting coming up and so forth. So you've heard what, what I think the position of, of the Board is?
Conditional, Mr.-
With some-
Along placing it on, on the tip.
Let's, let's-
Or whatever.
Let's see the language, and that's why maybe we need to have enough time between now and December 1st to actually see the, see the language, and again, this is only going to be a recommendation to the, to the governor, she's going to make the ultimate decision, but I think the consensus is that we want the governor to know that this is something we want to see happen, and in all likelihood, it won't happen, rail with trail at the cost they're talking about, so.
I will bring a letter to you December 1st.
Is that okay? Do we have a motion to direct Mr. Renshaw to do that?
Um, yeah, do we need to make a motion to do that, or is it just?
That's going to conclude this agenda item somehow.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I will say, I asked-
You asked for it to be on.
I asked Senator Fernandez to text Governor Healy, she did not respond, so. I tried to get the governor's opinion, but I was not able to.
Well, we haven't gotten the governor's opinion in, you know, four years.
She's trying to figure out how to fund the SNAP program.
Yeah, no, she's got a lot of problems. Motion, I guess, motion to direct the town manager to draft a letter for the Board's December 1 meeting, discussing support for the rail-to-trail project with conditions. Conditional-
On-
Conditional on future rail-
New rail infrastructures.
Okay, there's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Brown? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, we are going to discuss a civic academy. Let everybody-
The only thing I'll add is I do appreciate, you know, I think there was a precedent where if a board voted for something in the past, it wasn't really taken up again, and I think that, I think it is worth our time to review. I don't have anything else in mind, but like, when this comes up, if there's been public outreach, you know, the board reconsider it, you know, following, we've had two members on the board, so.
Three, yeah.
I, I-
Three.
Since his last, yeah, so I think that that's a good point of practice. Again, I'm not sure, there's other items, but I think that's-
Okay.
-responsive to the public.
All right, we're going to discuss the creation of a civic academy, Mr. Renshaw?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Moving on to a lighter topic, but equally impactful, I think. So this is a discussion item, not asking for the Board to make any, any formal motion. It was about a year ago that a resident, Margaret McCormick, reached out to my office, I think to Peter as well, to talk about this concept of a civic academy in Falmouth. Ms. McCormick subsequently reached out to Vice Chair Goldstone, I think recently, and to nudge, because it's been a year. These are great programs. I gave the Select Board some, some information, some links to four or five programs, four of them here in Massachusetts, and then, kind of selfishly, I gave you, gave you a link to a community that I managed in Colorado that implemented one of these programs while I was there. So hugely impactful, I think. You know, we talked about, earlier, we had, what, four interviews for, to fill out committees, vacancies. Introducing people to municipal government is, is, I think, one of, one of the, one of the top priorities a municipality should have, getting that interest and engagement with the, with the community, and educating them, making them more aware, I should say, making them more aware of how local government operates. So these, these programs, basically, and they're different lengths. The one that I managed in Colorado was eight weeks, I think a lot of the, I think the Arlington example is maybe six or seven. You can make it whatever you want, based upon the amount of information, in terms of classes and sessions that you want to get out, but hugely impactful in terms of introducing people to, to how, how the wheels turn in local government. And I think even more important than the awareness and education piece, is getting people more plugged into the opportunities to get more involved. You know, we just, the proclamation was about extra mile a day, and recognizing volunteerism. We have to be aware of those opportunities and have some kind of a poke or a catalyst to get you to jump in, and these types of civic academies are just that perfect, I think, for them to do that. They're informal, they're educational, and the, the community in Colorado that I was managing, there was a waitlist after the first year, and I'm sure that it's that same way, and for a lot of the communities here. So the most successful examples and models of these types of civic academies that I've seen rely on staff to basically put on and facilitate the sessions, and it can be everything from finance to public safety. It's hands-on, it's a lot of handouts and information, written material, there's a huge commitment, it's important, I think, to make sure that people, when they sign up, that they understand the commitment, and they can't miss a session, because it's all, it all kind of builds on each other in terms of the session. So I think it's a great opportunity. I want to thank Vice Chair Goldstone for, again, nudging and bringing the topic back up. We all get busy, and a year's been too long since it was introduced to, to my office. So I would, I would ask that the Board, after some discussion, give me some direction, perhaps, to, to implement the program. I wanted to kind of go in here tonight thinking the first of the year, but that may be aggressive. It may take a couple, few months to get, kind of get the program up and running, develop the curriculum, so to speak, but I think it's doable, and I think the, the benefits that, that are going to be created are going to far outweigh the cost in terms of staff time.
Would you think maybe a subcommittee or a working group or something working along with you would be a good idea to try and flush it out?
I mean, we can, we can, I've not, I've not used that model in the past. We could, we could put together, staff could put together something and bring it back, you know, for review, or we could have a subcommittee, a member of the Select Board participate in that. I'm not going to, I'm open to any suggestions you might have. The important thing, I think, is trying to get something in place.
Yeah.
And again, as we, as we head into the new year, maybe sometime in the spring, I want to be realistic, because sometimes I'm a little overambitious with how quickly I can get stuff off the ground. So I think in the springtime, if we focused on that, we'd be successful. But if a Select Board member would be interested in participating in that process, because Select Board's going to be involved, because one of those sessions, usually the first session, is that Local Government 101, where the Select Board member, perhaps the chair, would kind of sit down with the class and kind of explain what the, what the governing body does and how it keeps the wheels turning in local government.
Wondering if there might be some state funding that we could look to for something like this?
I had it in my notes. Everyone needs state funding nowadays, unfortunately. My only slight reservation with a subcommittee would be the timing, that's kind of like the town manager point, too. Unless, unless we put some, I think this should be something we aim to do aggressively, because this is an awesome thing, you know, I, I'm going to say it again, as a young member of the Board, I think it would be great to have this tool available to people, and, you know, this, I didn't really have an experience like this, I'm just a nerd, which is why I'm sitting here, but I think that, that would be terrific, because, you know, I think people, and the thing about student government and government, it's way higher level than the municipal level, and I think the town manager is absolutely correct, where encouraging people to participate and look at how much good can be done at the municipal level. So I think it's something we should really try to pursue, it's in my list now to look for state funding for. So, Mr. Chair, my only concern then would be if we did a, a subcommittee on it, is that I feel like sometimes that can lead to a longer time period. I might be inaccurate in saying that, but I would like to go the route of, of the town manager and town staff making a proposal for us to review, and then, you know, kind of going from there on how we want to pursue it.
I would agree, seeing as Mr. Renshaw's already done it before, so.
And we've got a lot of, well, a handful of terrific models, especially the ones from Massachusetts that share a similar form of government, you know, there's, there's a lot of backbone to, to go from, so I'm not sure if a, a subcommittee is necessary, but certainly, and I want to also say, I don't think I was the only one that was approached or that, that brought this up, but certainly any support that we can offer in getting it off the ground, I'm more than happy to, to be involved in that. And in terms of the, the funding, I mean, as you've noted, the, the cost is, is essentially staff time and some amount of photocopying, probably, which is not a huge cost to the town, but to the extent that it's an impediment. In this, this fiscal year in particular, some of the community members who approached me did express a willingness to fundraise and, and provide funds to a donation account that could be used to offset that cost if that were desirable and, and could get things off the ground. I agree that ideal timing, just based on when our elections are, it would be great to be doing this typically in a January to March timeframe. Is that realistic this year? Maybe not. Maybe it's a later spring thing this time for the first time, and we aim for a, a January civic academy in the, the future, but I guess I would say, from my perspective, it doesn't need to be a break-your-back, break-neck, we have to get this off the ground next week, but it would be great to get it moving.
And I'm not, I'm not a fan of reinventing the wheel, so we have a lot of great examples of how this has been successful in other communities, and we'd, we'd model those and pick the best features from, from each, that's, that would be my recommendation. And, and also making sure that we, I think to be successful, you have to be realistic, and you maybe put a cap, right, on the first class, just to kind of see, and then grow the program, kind of start small, so to speak. And I think reading through some of these websites, the other communities in Mass, Massachusetts, they did that, they, they placed a cap on the membership. If you're too aggressive, you start to overwhelm, and, and we want to keep it kind of manageable.
Train everybody in the first round, and then the program dies, right?
Well, yeah. And, 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 you know, I mentioned, there's not a significant cost, I mean, it's a commitment on the part of the participants as well as staff, so there, there is a cost, and, and getting that buy-in, and I've got, I want to talk about some other things that I'm going to do in my, in my manager's report with regards to the staff part of this, right? Because it's a lift, and they're typically after hours.
Yeah.
And so anyway, we'll, we'll cross those bridges when we get to them, but I, I think we can make this work, and it's not a huge lift, I'm just trying to be realistic with the launch date, and, and again, we've got perfect, we've got models that we can pick from.
Staff go the extra mile on a regular basis? This is one more mile.
Yes.
No more bridges and no more miles analogies.
I say do it, because being, wearing my co-chair of the EDIC hat, the, the direct and indirect benefit will be trying to fill vacancies on boards and committees, and with a, with increased awareness and understanding of municipal operations, I think we can, you know, really solicit the next generation of leaders from residents that live here.
I think that's one of the bigger benefits- I think that's one of the bigger benefits that I see right out of the gate, yeah.
Absolutely.
Do it.
Let's do it.
Let's see if we can engage younger people.
The only thing, I mean, we don't really need a motion, but can we just, like, authorize you to get working?
Yeah, so I just, I'm looking for some direct, some consensus, the direction that this is a program and initiative that the Select Board would like to see implemented, and then we'll get to work on it.
So I think a draft proposal by whatever date, you know, if we don't have set a date to it, I think would be awesome.
I agree.
Okay, let's move on. Consider a vote to approve the submission of a Community Preservation Committee application to fund the replacement of the Taft Playground located in Woods Hole. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know, the Assistant Town Manager, Peter Johnson-Staub, directly oversees, supervises the Community Services Department, of which Recreation is a division, and he's been working with Julie Williams-Tinkham on this project, so I'm going to ask Peter to kind of kick off the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So we are seeking the board's approval to submit this application to replace the playground equipment at the Taft Playground in Woods Hole at Bell Tower Park. As many of you may be aware, the playground is in really tough condition, and there, we feel that this is a pretty time-sensitive project to make sure that we can continue to have a safe facility, a safe playground at this location. We, over a year ago, there was some dialogue with community members about the design of that playground. It is named after a community member, Taft is the name of a community member, an individual with disabilities who has since passed away, and there was a lot of community involvement in the construction of that playground. So we certainly want to continue that dialogue. We did get an email message today from a member of that family, and there was some concern raised about the design. And I just want to emphasize again that what we're looking for tonight is Select Board authorization to submit this grant application, continue the design process, get more community input from the Woods Hole community in general, and the Taft family, or the, Taft is the first name.
Taft's family.
The Taft's family.
His name is Taft Morris.
Right, so the individual it was named after is Taft Morris. So the family of Taft Morris. We look forward to continuing that dialogue. And the last point I'll make is just that playground equipment is expensive to begin with. There's a, we've already heard from the dialogue that took place a while ago, and I will mention prior to hiring Julie Williams-Tinkham, that dialogue took place. So there was a really strong preference for wood, as opposed to the more economical, more commonly-installed modern playground equipment, which is primarily, you know, synthetic products at this point. And we did get a quote that is a black locust design, so it would honor that. And there's, you know, there's room to reconsider the design, but the cost at $650,000 presently is, you know, is pretty steep, and so there'll, you know, there'll be some limits and some parameters in terms of that ongoing dialogue about what the design of that playground is, barring, you know, some private support.
And I just want to, I was going to, sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't ask. Thank you for sending that email, because I think it is important to, again, note that we're not voting for a design, we're just voting for the approval for the funding request.
We are funding a design.
Yeah, but we're not voting on that design.
No, but that's what the funding is based on.
Yeah.
The funding is for design and construction, and there was a representative design that was submitted, but there is funding for design. So you don't have the full design until you pay for the design.
You have a copy of the rendition, and it's more conceptual in my mind. I'm not a playground designer by any stretch. I had a chance to meet with one of the Woods Hole Village Association members back in April, and it was made clear to me and Mr. McConerty at that time that this is a special place, and it was important to kind of honor that, you know, the elements meant something, right? So to just, we had no intention of including this illustration or rendition, is saying that this is going to be the final design. I think Peter's point is, there's going to be time after this to meet with the designer, meet with the community, and make sure that we get the elements right, that, again, honor Taft and the original playground set, that quite honestly, it's no longer safe to use.
Do we have a plan for going out to the community, or will develop one fairly soon?
Yes, we will develop one soon. You know, I'm sure there's, there are going to be multiple meetings, and I think it's probably, I think we'll want to have a meeting before, some community engagement before town meeting, but then after we have funds in hand, you know, community engagement after that to finalize the design.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, can, and excuse my lack of familiarity with the CPC process, but, so this application was submitted in August, correct? This past August? What's kind of the timeline? Where are we in the process of review of this application that we're looking to potentially approve?
So the CPC will be deciding, you know, will be acting on the applications that it has received by January for the town meeting warrant.
So that would be to recommend funding at this level, not necessarily still a design in January? Is that, I mean, because it does, it does say project description, the goal is design and installation, so.
Yes, that's exactly right. So if CPC moves it forward, brings it to a town meeting vote in April, then we would have funds in hand for both design and construction. So there would be design work that happens after April.
Anyone else? Ms. Pompous, you've stayed here throughout this meeting, I assume you have something to say?
I'm Catherine Pompous from Woods Hole. I'm here because neither Barbie or Kip could be here tonight, Taft's mother or sister, and they asked me to come. They were, I appreciate Mr. Renshaw sending me the email that this was on tonight's agenda. It came a little bit as a surprise, because we had had conversations previously about it, and I had no sense that this application was going in. Woods Hole loves that space and really wants to participate in it, and wants to participate in the planning. As Doug says, "My civic education says seldom is something put down with a cost and a picture, and it does not come to fruition in that shape." So it's a little unfortunate sometimes to see this far along without a little more engagement with the village. We are happy to come and talk anytime. But I appreciate what you've said, and that there will be future engagement is terrific. There are serious concerns about the site, I would think, that don't need to be hashed out here, but poured-in-place plastic on, when you're inches above the groundwater level, might not be the best surface, and there are a lot of things to think about down there. So I will welcome being able to participate in those conversations, and I know that there are a lot of parents and people who played on that playground who would like to participate, too.
Anyone else?
Are we at any rush?
I'm sorry?
Is there?
There is a bit of a time constraint, yes.
So, yeah, we're trying to get this, Peter could give a better understanding of the timeline, but we're trying to get this done so it makes the April town meeting warrant, which means January timeframe. So we're trying to get this.
So, yeah, if I could just, if I could just add to that. So frankly, we're reverse order a little bit. This was our new recreation director, and is new to the CP process, but really, it falls on me that we missed the step back in August to seek Select Board approval to submit the application. So the, we do have urgency to complete this, you know, final step that the Select Board is communicating to the CPC, that this application already received does have the Select Board's stamp of approval, so that it is eligible, because the Community Preservation Committee is reviewing applications now. They have to complete, you know, they have to make their, they have to vote their funding recommendations in January so that this goes on the April town meeting warrant. We don't want to miss the, we don't want to miss the January and April dates.
I just, I feel like we could thread the needle here. If we had, like, a community forum in Woods Hole at some time in late November, early December, you know, one or two of those, and then put it on a December agenda item. You know, I know that turnaround then was then quick, but is that not impossible?
Frankly, we can definitely schedule a community input meeting in that timeframe, but given the complexity of the issues that we're looking at, to think that we're going to complete the design process, you know, in two months, I think is unreasonable.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that, you know, where Ms. Pompous is coming from is, you know, there needs to, I am slightly hesitant to, you know, vote yes. I understand this is not the final design, but, you know, we won't have as much say as what the design could then be become after we vote this, is my understanding of how.
I think we'd have as much opportunity.
It's not controlled by a third party. The final design and construction will be controlled by the town manager, right? Once funding is received and approved, so we can, we can bring the design back to the Select Board in, after April, after town meeting.
All right.
So is it possible at this point to amend the application in any way?
Yes, yes, it is.
I guess I feel like, I hear the urgency to get us to a place of having a safe playground in Woods Hole. Spent hours on that playground. And at the same time, I hear you that the urgency is with the funding process, we have months to actually use that funding for community engagement, design, and installation, if we have it in this round of funding. But I would not feel comfortable, I think echoing Mr. Brown's and Mr. Richardson's discomfort, with putting in an application that does strongly imply, at least, that that is the design. It's got a line item budget that has equipment freight, it does not have design in the budget. And so to see an application that makes clear that we will be engaging the community and designing a playground as well as constructing it, and this is an expected budget, would make me feel much more comfortable with moving forward with this at this point.
Right. We could add a narrative to say, you know, based on feedback from the community, there are elements that will be changing in this design, and we will expect to stay within budget, but we may come back. We may, we may not stay within budget, because you can adjust a project with CPC if needed, if you can justify it.
So I guess I, I'll put an idea out there. I would move approval of a submission of a CPC application, an amended CPC application to fund the design and replacement of the Taft Playground located in Woods Hole with an amount not to exceed $650,000.
Is that, is that amended?
Amended to reflect community, pending, community engagement and design.
There you go.
Final design.
Including now a community engagement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I would second that.
That just works, though, legally? Or I don't know where I'm directing this at, but.
So we'll, right, so we will modify the application based on, if approved, based on this Select Board motion to reflect the intent of the board, and, yes, it is, it's, modifying community preservation applications is something that frequently happens.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of your evening.
We're almost done.
We'll take the rest of the day off.
Okay, so we are now at minutes.
And move approval.
Someone might make a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Just a quick update. I think I mentioned this to a couple of you already. We just, earlier this month, we had our third annual employee appreciation. It was well-attended. Appreciate the Select Board members that were able to make it. I know it's kind of an awkward time sometimes for folks that are working. My update is taking that employee recognition and acknowledgement to the next level. Peter and I, Peter and I have talked about, Peter and I have talked about, with the other department heads, we've talked about establishing a Employee of the Quarter and then Employee of the Year recognition program. I've had experience in other places, I think Peter has as well. It goes a long ways, and I'm not going to go into all of the details, but I just kind of will launch it right now, that we're going to be bringing that, and I do want to launch that at the first of the year, and turn it on a calendar year, so January, February, March, quarter one, and then so on. So in recognizing, it's not much, it's a gift card, it's acknowledgement. I think the most important part beyond the gift card, although that'll be appreciated, is the fact that there's recognition at a Select Board meeting. So it's public recognition of a job well done, going above and beyond, going the extra mile. So it's going to be, I think it's going to mean a lot, and it's going to resonate well within the employee ranks. And importantly, the review committee are their peers. So we're reaching out to a committee of about 15, spread out throughout the ranks, so to speak, so that representation is across all departments and all kind of levels of the organization, is the ones that are reviewing. We're going to tie it to the core values that we created, part of mission, vision, and core value statements, so tying that, give us an example of how you go the extra mile or above and beyond, and how it touched upon one of the five core values. So I think it's going to be an important message to the staff, that what they do is important, and we recognize that. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Update on the immigration forum, on ICE and immigration.
So is that a question to me?
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say something.
No, no, no. I have an update.
What's the update, Jeff?
We have, I have not planned a date yet. We have talked about initially, it was going to be like November, and here we go into November, and I haven't set a date yet. So that's on my, on my list of things to do. You know, fortunately, the, I've not, my office has not been made aware of any recent incidents. Yes, I was going to do that, but I decided not to. But regardless, we talked about having the community touchpoints in the conversation, so we'll set that up.
Thank you, yeah. I just, I saw it on the agenda.
So an example of one of those things that's been on my list and just have gotten occupied with other things.
At the risk of a difficult question, or I would like us to consider, as a result of the parking report that Jeff gave us, to consider raising the overtime violation amounts. I think we can discuss it. You know, Born, which is right around the corner, is $50. I think it's.
Saw that.
Yeah, I think it's something we probably should at least take a look at. May not be popular, but.
I'll tell you, even though the paid parking is not popular, it's certainly effective.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was surprised to see how far out of whack we are with some of the fines, really.
And in addition to that, if we could also consider, we had discussed this last week after the libraries, new library in Falmouth, looking at our number of parking spaces laws that we have in place.
The minimums.
Minimums, thank you. Yeah, which might be a zoning change.
I guess those would have to come from the planning board.
That would be zoning change, yes.
So would we, just a matter of process, obviously being new here, would we send a letter to our own board, zoning board recommending changes? Would that be something we could discuss?
Planning board.
Planning board, thank you. Would that be the way to go about that?
I would imagine that would be something to take a position on.
Well, it should be from this board, not individually.
Yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure, for sure. Yeah, I just meant, like, as an agenda item.
Right. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, my under, it's long gone. I would like an agenda item soon to discuss the potential for a emergency fund, just pursuant to, just reading the stories of what, you know, this is obviously something we can't do immediately, you know, so no rush on it, but just reading the stories of the amount of people that have been affected by federal government not being able to step up, just, just any way we can support the fantastic work done at the service center and, you know, provide them more funding, or whatever it may be. I just think that we're in an environment where municipalities are being asked to do more, and I think it should be doing more. more, and I think it should be doing more than the federal government usually is, which is, and this is to my entire political ideology, but that's the reality and where we're at. So I think that is some sort of agenda item, discussing an emergency fund or whatever you want to call it to, to support local services.
Or amendment at town meeting to increase human services.
Yeah, so, I mean, that could be the short-term answer, but I just think that some kind of planning or fund like that.
Would human services be the right place to increase the budget if you wanted to? Wouldn't really help directly to the service center.
Right.
Maybe.
Human services does offer grants.
Did you have a question?
Right, it's part of their budget, right. Exactly. I think that's what Mr. Brown is suggesting, right.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second. Lest there be any concern, the meeting tomorrow night has been posted, so it's not a problem with everyone attending if they want to.
Oh, I want to.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We all do.
Okay. Think everything.
Motion, and we have a second.
All in favor?
Motion.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Our email address is carsonprinting@gmail.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.